Lucky that we do have someone locally here who has had the experience and been on the team with all of us who have been involved in the last many, many years.
Yeah, he's worked with our last three county emergency managers.
Yeah, right. Anything else you want to, anyone else want to pull anything?
Do you want to approve that separately or do you want to leave it?
I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay, so we'll just approve it as a whole?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a few minutes before we open for the public hearing, so we could move on and do a few things before that.
Cover the subordinate service district?
That's at nine o'clock?
No, number five.
Oh, five, okay. I don't know if they'll give her enough time.
Madam Chair, I'd suggest that you allow Kristin to introduce the topic and do as much as she can with the time allotted.
Okay, Kristin, would you be ready?
And I'll just hand out one additional comment that came on Kelly Hill, so you can glance at that prior.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, colleagues and members of the public. Today I'm bringing forward a county's proposed subordinate governmental service district policy, following up on the July Committee of the Hall meeting. I want to apologize for the link error in today's board meeting agenda. I did bring copies of handouts, as well as place some extra handouts in the back of the room for those who are here today, and of course, it will be scanned in when the minutes from the meeting are uploaded. I'll start off by providing a historical overview of the SGSD program, and feel free to just let me know when it's nine o'clock and I'll put it on pause if I'm not done by then. Cook County, and specifically the Highway Department, has managed subordinate governmental service districts, or SGSDs, since the 1990s. This is a, what I would consider a longstanding program for Cook County, and the proposed policy document before you this morning reflects how we've been doing business for the past seven to eight years, with a few exceptions that I will highlight a bit later. Currently, there are a handful of SGSDs in Cook County, as well as the two prospective SGSDs that the County Board will consider either today or at a future date. There are also some SGSD requests that are pending, or at least some calls that either the Auditor's Office or the Highway Department has fielded over the past six months or so. With that in mind, and as we are seeing what might be an increase in the number of SGSDs for Cook County, it's just a good time, I think, to review the policy and the procedures for how we've been operating and consider formal adoption of the same. So what is an SGSD? I will start off with that. There are county roads in Cook County, there are several private associations in Cook County that work very well, and a subordinate governmental service district may be established for various reasons, but one thing that they all have in common is that the County Board considers them following a petition. So, in other words, the county, be it the Highway Department or the County Board, we aren't out there looking for new SGSDs or saying this neighborhood would be a great SGSD. We take calls or questions and then ultimately respond to a petition that comes from affected landowners. That is how an SGSD gets established. An SGSD differs from a private road maintenance association in how the costs are shared. Again, some private road maintenance associations work very well in Cook County, there are very many of them, and we aren't out here forcing SGSDs on folks. But when an SGSD is established, instead of the finances or the costs of road maintenance being managed independently, those costs and the bidding process for summer maintenance services and/or winter maintenance services are solicited by the Highway Department on the county's behalf. We work very closely with the Auditor's Office, and ultimately, those costs are assessed back to the affected landowners. The boundary of an SGSD is established at the time an SGSD is established. So that's a little bit about how an SGSD differs from a private road maintenance association, and how they get established here in Cook County, or how they have been established in the past. Once an SGSD is approved or is established, the neighborhood elects a road liaison. So in other words, someone to speak on behalf of the neighborhood, and someone who the Highway Department works very closely with to make road maintenance-related decisions. In other words, should we add some more gravel to this road this year? Should we replace a culvert? Or how often do we call out for snow plowing? Is it every time there's a couple inches of snow, or just when we get big snows? How are those services managed? Those decisions are made in collaboration with a designated road liaison. And an SGSD does have to provide proof of election of their road liaison after they are established. The purpose of having a road liaison really helps us keep our administrative costs down for this program. Instead of the Highway Department or other county staff taking calls from everyone in a given neighborhood, we work very closely with that road liaison, and a good road liaison works very closely with his or her community as well. So that is a tool that we help to make decisions more expediently and also keep our administrative costs down of the program, because as we all know, managing SGSDs is not the only thing that's on the Highway Department's plate from year to year. Once the road liaison is elected, that person must serve for a minimum period of time. That really helps us, again, make consistent decisions. It helps the road liaison learn a little bit about how maintenance is done and how much it costs. Some road liaisons have been in place for any number of years, but if someone wants to call into question or maybe consider electing a new road liaison, there are terms in the policy for how that is done as well. Once we have our road liaison, and often this is discussed in the public hearing for an SGSD, that SGSD has to decide which services it wants for the neighborhood. Is it summer-only, maybe just grading the road periodically, or very minimal services in the summer, all the way up to financing complete road reconstruction where that might be needed? So what level do we set for summer maintenance services? And the same question for winter maintenance services. Some SGSDs choose one or the other, and there are SGSDs that request both summer and maintenance, summer and winter maintenance services. So the level of service is something that we decide typically after an SGSD is approved in collaboration with that road liaison, and then year to year after that. I think I will save a couple of new topics for after the public hearing this morning, but what I do have time to touch on is the administrative fee for the program. This helps to keep the SGSD program cost-neutral. So when an SGSD pays into the administrative fee that is part of the proposed policy, that is tracked separately, all revenues received from an SGSD are tracked separately. So this isn't money that the county is making or money that the Highway Department is making. The administrative fee is directly associated with our costs for managing this program and making sure that the SGSD policy is self-sustaining for Cook County, which it hasn't always been before these procedures were implemented about seven or eight years ago.
Thank you. For those folks who came in late, we do have handouts in the back about the policy, if you want to pick that up. So it's at nine o'clock, and I'm going to close the board meeting, and I'm going to open the public hearing. So just to get an idea about the areas that you folks are from, would you indicate by your hand, how many are here for Kelly Hill? Is anyone here for Camp 20? Okay, so I will, I will say right now that for those of you with Camp 20, we always publish in the newspaper that we're going to have a public hearing, and for Camp 20, it was not published. So we are going to set another date for that, probably within the next couple of weeks. But since you're here and you're not really on schedule till 9:45, there could be other folks joining us, so we will open it up at 9:45, and you'll have your time also, just to let you know on that. It was unfortunate that it was not published. So we need a motion to open the public hearing for consideration of the subordinate governmental service district for the Kelly Hill area. I need a motion.
So moved?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Brady, would you like the folks to step up to the microphone and sign in?
Yeah, I think they should for each comment.
Okay.
And what was asked at the Kelly's Hill Road Association annual meeting was, if you are in support of asking Cook County to create a subordinate government service district on our road system, please sign below. I understand that if this were to happen, fees for this service will be assessed equally on residents' property taxes every year by the county. This will eliminate the annual contribution to the Kelly's Hill Road Association. The county will then bid out the plowing and road maintenance, and the, at that time, 12 out of 18 folks were paying, or 65% of the road association. Give me the, give me the number, how many responded to the petition? And the affirmative?
Yeah, 14 respond to...
Maybe you want to start?
Good morning.
Yeah.
Thank you all for hearing us today. I'm Hillary Freeman, and involved with the Kelly Hill Road Association. We had 18 out of the 28 households, of the 20, of the 18, we have 11 households who do not pay. So you can kind of see that we really have, among the paying members of the association, strong support. And I believe you also got some emails, and I know you at least have one or two letters of support. Is that correct, Brady?
We got one additional one just the other day that we handed out.
Okay, great. I think the reason that we really made this movement and why we're asking for this support is that all of us, visitors and commissioners, are here today because we have roads that we can drive on. If your roads were not satisfactory, you probably would find it very difficult. And one of the major functions of the county is to ensure quality infrastructure for all of its residents. As a voluntary road association, we have tried to ensure quality roads, and we have come to a point where some of our members have said, it's a voluntary road association, and so we'll pay if we choose to, because we're voluntary. It's kind of an interesting concept. As someone said, if you have a voluntary fire department, do they show up when they feel like it, because it's voluntary? So the question really, I think, before you and for many members of our road association, is that we want to ensure quality infrastructure, and at the same time, have a voice on how that's done. Both of those are true. The thing that we really look forward to in working with the Highway Department is knowing that we can still influence the decisions. We can end the relationship if we don't like the relationship, nothing personal, Highway Department. But it's really important that we have the ability, as a road association, to maintain itself, as a road association, to be able to work with the Highway Department to meet the needs of that particular road association. And so what we're really asking you today, and I'm speaking on behalf as part of the Board of the Road Association, and knowing that there will be a few who will differ with us, and mostly that difference comes from members who are non-paying at this point, is to really move forward. You have the ability today as a Board, not only to hear us, but to approve us. And I know that in July, when we came forward in good faith, what you asked was that we could wait till August, and one of the things that we asked is that we were willing to wait, but that if we waited, would you move forward with approval? And so with that, speaking on behalf of myself, but also as President of the Road Association, that this has been a concern, and that infrastructure is as important to us as it is to the rest of the county. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak? Can you step forward to the table and sign in, please?
Chairman, members of the Board, I do have another letter that was from a member that was not included in the count there. I'd like to submit this one. The proposal for subordinate service district seems to me, at this point in time, to be premature to affecting our infrastructure. So far, we've, I think, managed fairly well without the additional services, but the proposal that was offered to the members suggested that, number one, the services would cost each of us more than we've been paying now, and it would increase, and it would charge those fees to people who pay nothing now, because they don't live there and they don't come up there. That would dramatically increase the amount of funds available for the service of the road, but there's been no proposal whatsoever as to what things they would improve on the road with those extra funds. So many of us oppose this as being simply a way to collect funds without any budget going forward, when the budget in the past has been adequate. That's, that's my primary concern. I don't think that, that we really do have the infrastructure problem that was mentioned. The, yeah, I guess I'll just leave it at that. I don't need to go unless there aren't any other questions.
Would you sign in, please?
Well, yeah.
So Madam Chair, I'll just mention that, I mean, it's in your packet, but that 17 of the 30 people signed the petition, and just got a letter here from Richard Bell Pio, property 552312325, opposing any additional tax increases for summer and winter road maintenance for Kelly's Hill.
Okay, anyone else would like to comment or give opinion? Please sign in too.
My wife and I live on 85 Kelly's Hill. We bought our land about 24 years ago, and we built our house after Dick Swanson. We had him check the title and the abstract, and everything got straightened out except one thing. The county says they own the road, the first half-mile, and they won't give us an easement, and they won't do any work on it. Now, when we first moved up there, there was, the head of the DNR was Ranger Bob. I don't know if everybody knows him, but he was willing to do some work, and like, we asked him to post the road in the springtime like the county roads, and he did. And after he left, things have changed. We can't do any work on the road without their permission. We had a bad spring down by the highway. We fixed it, the county, the road association. But this has always been a problem, that they say they own that first half-mile of the road, or most of it. It goes through some peoples, the first few people on the road's land. The road goes through my land, part of my land, and I just wonder if, how that's going to work out with them telling you what to do. And it's been a problem, and I think it continues to be a problem. We don't have an easement to get to our land. They won't give us one. And it could cause a problem if you tried to sell the house and, and somebody wanted to buy it with a mortgage. I don't know how that works, but the road association has been very good. It's worked out really well. I'd like to see it continue the way it is, but I think I'm in the minority. Thank you. And it was nice to see you, Commissioner Sorely, on the road, looking at it.
Yes, I did. I was to the rendezvous, and then I came back through and toured Camp 20 and Kelly Road, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And I saw you on the road.
Thank you.
We have a half hour here, so anyone else like to come up and give their concern?
Good morning. My name is Amy Doffenbach, and I live at 97 Bloomquist Mountain Road. And we have, we bought our property back in 1995, and at that time, the road was a path. I hate to think how an ambulance would have ever gotten up that path had we needed that service. However, since the road association, the road has definitely gotten better. It could, even there are spots that could be better. I think having to pay 82 cents a day for that assurance of our road being better is really not an issue. And we don't live there full-time. We come up, we have a house up there now, but I think being able to come up in the winter and have assurance that the road will be plowed, and that at the end of the winter, the road association wouldn't be trying to beg for funds when that money runs out, which often happens, and who they beg for money for are those of us who are paying. And I agree that people who don't come up all the time, maybe that's an issue, but again, you bought that land, sometime you're probably going to do something with that land, so I think having a road to get to your land is really important. So I really support the road association's petition to have that be a subordinate task district, and I hope the rest of you would approve that. Thank you.
Thank you. For those folks who came in, we do have some chairs up here. We're discussing the Kelly Hill area right now. We'll move on to Camp 20 at 9:45.
May I add something to my comments?
Mm-hmm. After, after this gentleman.
He can go first. I don't want to.
I'm Dave Harvey. I'm at, I live at 43 Kelly's Hill. I don't have a great deal to say. Been associated with the road association as a member since, for the last 12 years, and on the Board for the last two, I think, three. And I would like to, to speak in support of the motion. We do need, we have been reliant on the services of John Bloomquist to come and do a great deal of plowing, which he, we paid him basically fuel and a minor fee over that. It's been more or less a labor of love for him. And I, that those days, as he has told us, are numbered, and our costs will increase. The increased usage of the road is not going to make it less needy of care and improvements. So I, I think we, we will find good use, and if we find that we have more funds than are necessary with this new form, we'll do what we always do. We will lower next year's fees and reduce the requirements of the taxpayers. Otherwise, we will find good use on that road to improve. It's, it's a lot of places that could use, that need continual care, because it is, it's, it's a mountain road. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jerry Henneker, again, from 147 Bloomquist Mountain Road. I want to point out on the map here, on one of these three properties up here at the top. All three of us have remained somewhat in opposition to this, because the services that have been provided in the past seem to end about here, and we haven't had road service beyond a certain point, with rare exception. In the snow, snow plowing in the winter, that's not an issue. We arranged with the power to cover all the way up. In terms of maintenance, though, we've missed out, and in fact, had an issue some years ago where we were designated a priority to fix a spot in the road there, and it took them four years of delays, not because we didn't have funding, but they had other projects that they moved ahead of. So we couldn't get access or use. And lastly, emergency access was mentioned. I can assure you, even with bad roads in there, I've twice had ambulance services help me out of there with no problems. Thank you.
So what you're saying is you're included now? You weren't before, but you're included now in the map?
Yeah, we are included.
Mm-hmm, you are included now.
We're, we're included in here, but there's been no budget to suggest that we're going to get any more service than we've gotten in the past.
Okay.
And that's, that's the big thing, is no budget.
So as we go along, if anyone has any questions or anything, we can, we can do that too.
I'm Annette Dunsmore. I usually go by Kim. I'm at 116 Bloomquist Mountain Road. I built a house in 2003. The road was, as Amy said, pretty much a path. We did a lot of work. We graded with an old grader every, every single weekend holidays to try and make that road better. It wasn't until 2008 that we formed the association, so everybody could pay into a thing and have a little more organized system. At that time, we decided that we would start at the highway and improve the road as we go further up the hill. That way, the improvements are affecting the most people at that time. I was hoping that we would have had an answer about the first section of the road that was the original road into Calville. I did provide information before you, your Board denied it the last time we came, and I was told, get a survey. So since that time, I've, with the new highway engineer, I gave her the information again with the surveys out of the Recorder's Office. So I was hoping to hear something about that today, of whether those first properties would be included in the road association or not. Some of the issues that have brought us here today is, I've had questions about, you know, the accounting system, and people don't like the way I've put it together on a spreadsheet that shows everybody and who's paid what. So I'm just doing that on Excel. When we did do the project down by the highway to correct a bunch of issues, I had to get permission from MNDOT and the DNR. It took months to get those approvals before we could even start the project, and then our contract- our contractor was tied up with other jobs. We finally did get it done, like September. We have a superior hiking trail that crosses our road system, so it's inviting a lot of people. Their GPSs tell them to go through our road instead of taking 14 to get to a vacation rental on Wild Plum Lane up on 14. As far as doing road maintenance.
No, we, I'm sorry, I was going to. Here, in the back. And I really think what she's saying is super important. So is there a way we can turn up the volume?
She needs to lean into the microphone.
Thank you.
Okay, so bottom line is, we're here because everybody hasn't paid into the system. Some people are doing a lot of work without being paid. Some people are doing work with being paid next to nothing. And, you know, my dad has been grading the road. He's 78. We cannot continue to count on him to grade the road forever. We need a system that brings in a neutral party when there are disagreements about where the road maintenance should be done, how much it's going to cost. You know, a couple people shouldn't be responsible for doing the whole road system and then being degraded because somebody didn't like what was done. You know, everything is about a budget. You can only do so much per year on $200 a year assessments. So I'm in support of the Road Association going to a subordinate tax district. I was hoping to have more information and what kind of costs we thought might be going forward. And I would hope that our assessments going forward could be remaining at a $300 a year amount in doing the work that can be afforded by that.
I'm sure I could read the letter. It was presented at the beginning. This is from Nina McKee. She said, "I write in full support of Kelly's Hill Road Association becoming a subordinate service district. For several years, the association has operated as a voluntary organization whereby property owners contribute money for road maintenance and snow removal. This fragile premise and practice has operated with difficulty and is in the long term unsustainable insofar as the association has no mechanism for compelling financial contribution from any property owner. In fact, nearly one-third of property owners do not contribute toward the upkeep of our shared infrastructure, shifting the burden to those who ostensibly operate by charity and goodwill. Given the fact that the association has no legal instruments at its disposal to compel payment, given road access is crucial to a stable community, and given the understanding the association has developed with the Department of Transportation, in the Cook County Auditor's Office, in the May 29 meeting, it would behoove both the property owners and the Board of Commissioners to authorize the SGSD effective May of 2020. Despite the fact I am a part year resident, I pay the full fee without question. I do not immediately benefit from snow removal, for example, insofar as I'm not on my property when the road needs to be plowed, yet I pay for the services so others in this neighborhood have access to their homes in the long term. I preserve and possibly enhance my property's value. Should I opt to not pay because I feel my contribution is unnecessary, the consequences could be devastating for everyone. The road can be iced over or otherwise impassable, culverts can freeze and damage the roadway, run off my pool and create serious damage to the road service, but why should I care? Well, there is no way for anyone to force me to pay a fee. I simply don't feel like paying. In order for this area with its beauty and accessibility to maintain its value and revenue potential for Cook County, the roads must be secured. It's a simple infrastructure scenario. I was troubled at the 6/25/19 board meeting to hear a pastor remark that there is an uptick in these road applications that has caused a policy review. Whereas a policy review is indeed in order, the ordinance dated October 2011, it's really a policy, the association's request is not made on a trend. There simply is no other tool at the association's disposal to preserve and maintain our roads equitably. Our community cannot thrive because some property owners feel a certain proclivity toward paying for a common, long-term good. The association has learned that feelings are not a reliable guarantee of stable, sustainable roads. Thus, I beseech the Board of Commissioners to approve the association as a subordinate service district to mitigate long-term damage, declining property values, and potential civil action among neighbors." That's Nina McKee.
Thank you. So we'll continue with comments or concerns?
Well, I have one big concern.
Would you please, would you please step up to the microphone as you requested to?
I have a very, I get very stressed out when I know that many people have hearing aids and really can't hear.
And would you please?
Yeah, so I'm just going to write that down as, can I write it down as a suggestion?
You can write your name and address. You can verbally tell us your suggestion.
Okay, verbally tell you the suggestion.
Yes.
I really suggest that at any one of these types of meetings, there be someone that can have a loud voice so that everybody in the room can benefit from the things that are being said. Is that all I have to say?
That's fine. I'll remind people to lean into the microphone.
Yes.
Okay.
Many people agree with me. And I'm sitting in the front.
So we have about 15 minutes before this will close.
We can close it anytime you want with a motion.
Pardon?
You can close this public hearing with a motion at any time the comments are done.
Right, I just want to give everybody a chance.
I'm Diane Henneker, 147 Bloomquist Mountain Road. And my question is, I'm very happy with the snow plowing we have, and are we going to be able to still hire this person to do our plowing? Because he also does our driveway as well as having done a very good job on keeping the road plowed. I don't know who can answer that question.
So Brady, could you go over the process in terms of hiring? When a subordinate district is approved, then what is the next step?
Well, the public hearing is the, is the current step, which is not an approval. It's just a requirement before you would approve. So after you close the public hearing, you could either approve or disapprove, or you could continue the public hearing if there was more issues to discuss. But after approval, you could approve a financing method at that time, including the types of services. Presumably, you would approve the services that the majority are requesting, but financing could come even at a later date, at a different reading. Or you could approve the whole package at one time, including what the majority seemed to be requesting, what they requested in their, in their petition, which was equal amongst all the owners. But that's, that's an open question at this point until you approve it. So you really are, you're asking different things. You can approve the, right after this meeting, you can simply approve a district to provide the services requested, financing, any one of those methods could come at a later date.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, the question about who does the work, that's administratively what the Highway Department's responsibility is, is to work with the district and the district's representative to determine service levels and develop an RFP and manage the bidding to provide those services on an annual basis. So the creation of an SGSD means that there isn't a direct negotiation for who's going to provide the services. It means that the county is going to manage a bid process for someone to provide those services on an annual basis, and performance measures are included in that contract.
Yes.
Quick question. Is there a pathway or a possibility that any particular properties could choose not to be a part of the proposal?
That'd be a question for Brady, but.
Molly?
Molly.
Do you want me to address that?
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, the, the request in front of the board is for a defined area defined by the map. The board then has discretion to establish the SGSD, however, with, with whatever boundaries. You wouldn't want to include properties that perhaps weren't included in the original And I, I may suggest, Madam Chair, that if there are no other people who wish to do a, who wish to comment on the Kelly Hill SGSD, you could close the public hearing. We have some time before the 9:45 item, and perhaps Engineer Foster could address the board and address some of the questions that were raised during the public comment period if, if the commissioners wished.
Okay. So any more comments on Kelly Hill Road? You need to step up to the microphone and sign in, please.
Hello, my name is Deba Cunningham. I'm not really here for the Kelly Hill project, but there was a question that I have based on what Mr. Cadwell said regarding the RFP process that will help inform some of our concerns in the next hearing. So is it okay if I ask that question?
You can address that when we open Camp 20.
Okay.
Yes, please. So you don't need to sign in.
Oh.
You can wait.
Okay.
Wait for when we open that up.
Okay, I'll just have to remember what he said.
Okay, this is, this is Kelly Hill. Okay. Anybody else on Kelly Hill Road?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Kelly Hill.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I may, I would like to continue reviewing the SGSD policy, after which I'd be happy to address some of the questions that were raised on the Kelly's Hill hearing specifically. There have been quite a few people who came into the room since we started talking about the proposed SGSD policy. Just as a quick summary, we have talked about the fact that after an SGSD is established, the Highway Department works very closely with an elected road liaison to set the level of service for any given neighborhood. And we've also talked about variable levels of service or different ways that costs can be shared or assessed back to the property owners who are within the boundary of an SGSD. I would like to go into that piece of the policy in more detail for everyone's awareness, and that's also one of the areas where we've seen some changes. It is a proposed change to past practice as well as a proposed change that is new since July's Committee of the Whole meeting. If we go on to the last page of the policy, we'll talk about the SGSD assessment for services. As Auditor Powers mentioned, the assessment method could be set at the time an SGSD is established, or it could be determined at a future meeting if more information is needed or if a follow-up with the neighborhood or the road liaison is appropriate before the county board makes an informed decision. So once we have a level of service, an estimated cost for an SGSD that can be shared equally upon all property owners, everybody pays the same amount, it can, or it could be assessed in proportion to front footage of a road for those who have lived in a city in the past, City of Duluth specifically. I know they do their assessments based on front footage. Another option is to share that assessment in proportion to market value. There are some current SGSDs who do that. Let's say there's a lot of raw land and maybe a few improved properties, and that, I guess that could be an example of a case where a neighborhood has chosen or requested the board to split the costs in proportion to market value in the past. The one new one that would be added is at the request of an individual from one of the prospective SGSDs, and that would be to split costs based on travel distance to one's property. In other words, if somebody lives at the beginning of the road, maybe they don't pay as much as someone who has to travel the full length of the road to get to his or her property. That is not currently a method that is used in any SGSDs. It is not the method that is proposed or thought for the Kelly's Hill neighborhood, but it is an option that someone requested we add to the policy is to assess costs based on how far a person has to travel to get to his or her property. So that is a new assessment method. Again, that was added at the request of a property owner. I would also like to go through what happens in the case of SGSD termination. As I mentioned earlier, the costs of managing the SGSD program are accounted separately from the Highway Department's budget or Cook County's budget. These aren't revenues that go to the county in general. They are managed independently, and they are separated according to neighborhood. So let's say that at some point in time, a neighborhood requests their SGSD be terminated, and the board approves that request. In that case, let's say there's a balance of $500 remaining in the account that is returned to the property owners who have been paying in. So that is what happens if an SGSD needs to be terminated. The other topic that we talked about when the SGSD policy was reviewed at Committee of the Whole in July is the financing portion of it. Where does the finance rate come from? If, if a neighborhood needs to do more work than what they have in account balance to cover, and if that work is financed, or if the board agrees to finance that work for the neighborhood, the recommendation is the interest rate would be consistent with the county's revolving loan fund, which I might ask Brady to help me out on this, but it is consistent with the 10-year bond rate? Is that the terminology?
The, the 10-year treasury bond rate, 2% over, that's the, that's the standard.
So that would be the interest rate. If financing was required, we would recommend an interest rate consistent with how the county finances through the revolving loan fund for other purposes. Those are a couple of the topics that came up in July. One thing that I think warrants further discussion is whether or not there's a cap to the program. Right now, there is a prospective SGSD, and if that SGSD is approved, they are looking at financing a very large amount. That is currently the only SGSD that falls into that category. I think as time moves forward, if we start to see an uptick in the number of SGSDs that are looking for a significant amount of financing from the county, we will have to explore a cap in the program at that time. In other words, I don't know. have to explore a cap in the program at that time. In other words, I don't know what the county's capacity is to finance all of these improvements. I'm comfortable with where we sit today, whether or not that one large SGSD is approved in the future, but I think we need to continue to monitor that to determine whether or not a cap should be set at some point in the future if we start to see many SGSDs requesting large amounts of the program. One thing that was discussed and that the board needs to decide in adopting today's SGSD policy, or if you want me to get more information, I'm happy to come back. I'll be here for the budget meeting on August 27. But the other area that we need to look at is whether or not there's a maximum term for financing. So if there's a large amount financed, can they finance that over a period of five years, or 10 years, or 20 years, or do we want to leave that indefinite in the policy and handle that on a case-by-case basis? Some of the reasons that were mentioned for considering a cap, maybe that should be capped at 10 years. In the past, it's been capped at five years, but of course, if the board finances a large amount over a period of only five years, that would be asking too much of many affected property owners, I believe. So one term that has been talked about is maybe 10 years as a maximum. The reasons for having a cap to that would be sometimes property ownership or a neighborhood's level of service changes as properties are sold. So maybe we don't want to allow financing over a period of 20 or 30 years, knowing that property ownership is very likely to change within that period of time. Of course, the reasons for allowing a longer term of 20 or 30 years are to spread those costs over a longer period of time. So those are the reasons to consider or not consider a financing cap to the program. The board could also decide to handle it on a case-by-case basis when the request arises.
Thank you. So we have a few minutes to discuss the request from the Kelly Hill District and comments from you.
I just have a question about the ownership, the first mile. I'm not too familiar with that issue. Is there any further light on that, or the first half mile? Wasn't there a concern brought up about that as easement and such?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, would you like me to go into the Kelly's Hill questions before we address the policy?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's...
No, I'd be glad to do so. But I wanted to leave the opportunity to... I'll do that. I'll talk about some of the questions that were raised during the Kelly's Hill hearing, and I would be happy to take questions on either the policy itself or the Kelly's Hill neighborhood. The request, if I may, I just pointed out on the map, it is going up to this point where the road curves is the area in question. So we aren't talking about the whole hill, the whole road, or Boone Chris Mountain Road. The question has been raised up to that first corner.
And that's unresolved at this point?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Mills, that issue was addressed and well researched by Cook County in 2014. Residents of the neighborhood came forward at that time with the road history, and we hired an independent, third-party real estate attorney to do some research on the road. And the conclusion of that research was that Cook County does not currently have any responsibility to maintain or repair that portion of the road. I did want to follow up on the gentleman's comment about getting permission to work in that area of the road. Minnesota Department of Transportation does own a significant amount of right-of-way through that area, and it's my understanding the Department of Natural Resources also claims easement to that area. So whether it is the current road association or the Cook County Highway Department on behalf of an SGSD, we do have to get permission from both authorities to work in that area. But it is not currently Cook County's responsibility to take care of that first half mile of the road, is the conclusion that we reached in 2014.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it is now 9:45. So we will be... a motion to close the public hearing on the Kelly Road...
We already had one.
Anybody did that?
We already did that.
I'll make a motion to close the regular board meeting and open the public hearing for Camp 20 Road.
Point of order.
Yep, point of order. We can't actually open the public hearing because the notice wasn't published in the paper?
I'm going to explain that.
Thank you. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
There's a chair right up front, if that helps.
So we have had a situation where all public hearings are published in our local newspaper. However, Camp 20 was not. So for all of you folks that are here for Camp 20, we still want to hear your comments, questions, and concerns. Brady will reschedule the Camp 20 public hearing within the next couple of weeks. Brady?
We are set to go when you give authorization. That will be published again, hopefully this Saturday, and then the hearing will be at the next board meeting on August 27. That is a required formality before the county can approve a district, but it won't affect your ability to give any comment you give today will have the same weight as if you had been here at the next board meeting. It's just a requirement. They cannot approve anything until after that valid notice has been given by... through the local newspaper. Regardless of the fact that you all got personal notice, it still has to be in the newspaper. So they could not make a decision today. They can make a decision if it, in fact, is published and we hold that meeting on August 27. They can close that public hearing and make a decision at that time. But your comments today will have the same bearing, whether you make them today or whether you're here again on the 27th.
So we have a chair up front with the microphone, and we will hear your comments, concerns. We've received letters already, so we have a start on that. And we ask that you be respectful in your comments, that you address us as a board. And it looks like we will have 45 minutes to do this, and it looks like we have a lot of folks who are concerned about this. So at the moment, I will give you five minutes for your comment, and that will start after you sign in at the table. So I'm ready for the first comment, and you remember what it is.
Hello, my name is Deb Conne. I am at 1034 Camp 20 Road, and I come here in opposition... to the proposed Suburbanian Service District. It appears to me that the petition that was circulated by one of our neighbors with the intent of having this be a very minimalist project has kind of gone way beyond the scope of what I think people who signed that original petition ever envisioned happening. After seeing especially the previous hearing and speaking with Mr. Cadwell, it appears to me that anything that is approved would lead to the potential of a much wider road, which we are opposed to. We think everyone who signed that petition, or virtually everyone who signed it, is probably opposed to. We don't want a lot of traffic and noise. You know, we bought land for environmental reasons. My biggest concern is that there's a beaver pond up the road, and if that road is widened, I could see it being drained. It's a, as you know it, there's a keystone species that pond feeds and aquifer that provides clean water to what the swamp over there, the fruit weed, the brood. Yes, I realize that there are risks having an unmaintained road, but these are risks that many of us voluntarily choose to shoulder ourselves. Again, I'm just... I think that this project is going to be bigger than we thought it would be. And so I'm in opposition to this. And I think you've gotten my comments as well. I also think that there's going to be tremendous... you know, viewing the policy of the county with how these things can be funded, is either the policy the Board of Commissioners at its discretion, the elector elect access for these services or funding, using a variety of methods. And the way I read, at its discretion, meaning that's a broad determination, not a random determination. And again, I'm not sure that that was originally what we had intended. So I withdraw any support that may have looked like I had signed. I simply withdraw that. I do have one question. Is it possible, since this hearing wasn't published, I mean, is it possible that this thing can just die today? This whole project, in other words, can this be stopped in its tracks if, you know, there hasn't been a published hearing notice, right?
Correct.
I don't know how people are going to speak to this issue, but for questions' sake, if the majority of people here are in opposition to this, and the notice doesn't get published, again, I mean, this thing could potentially just die. It could just go away, right?
It could.
Okay. Thank you.
Please sign in. Stacy, do we have another piece of paper? Okay, good.
My name is Judy Huang, and I've been coming up here for six decades and have a five-month-old fifth generation now coming up. This... I have properties on 893 Camp 20 and 280 Island View. It is so much part of my family's life to come back into the wild forest and without electricity, without running water. It's all an adventure, and it's all work, and it's all wonderful. And the road is part of that adventure. It... any improvement on that road would cause distress. There would be more traffic. People would be driving faster. I think the condition of the road keeps us safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen, and all men and all women. Bobby?
Bonjour.
My name is Roden Hassler, known by most people here as Butch. I'm probably the... I bought my property in 2002, and I've lived there year-round ever since. So I'm the longest year-round resident out there. I know that road very well. I know the road very well. I worked out there for 12 years on a 40 to 50 hour a week job, driving over it. There's nothing wrong with it. When I bought the property, I hired a lawyer. He explained to me, this is just an egress and easement, and it's not for the public, general public. And I says, "Good, that's what I want." And it's been hard times. It's taken some snowfalls. I cut five hours to get out. But that's what it is. That's where I want to be. The problem with the road is people drive too fast on it. We have plenty of speed bumps designed into the system now, and it keeps pretty good. It stops a lot of accidents. I've been on off that road several times in four winters on my truck, because people are doing 25, 30 miles an hour on it. And it's scary. Another thing is, is that people that don't belong out there are out there. And I hate to say it, but Cook County incites that. They put up the Cook County road signs, and people don't know any better. I talk to people, and they say, "Well, this is a county road." No, it's not. This is a private easement. And you can't blame them. They don't understand. I had a 28-foot furniture van truck from Duluth stuck in my driveway because his navigational system said he could go from Grand Portage to the Gunflint Trail where he had his last developed by going up the Greenwood River Road. You can't do it. And that's all from the digital mapping that Cook County did that's got one of these navigational systems. It's promoting. Last year, Visit Cook County and Voyager's brewery ran a bicycle race through our property. You know, this is not necessarily good. There's liabilities on people's private property. And like I said, my lawyer told me I'd have no services. The road isn't... no maintenance schedules can be done on it, and I was fine with it. I bought the property. And anybody else that comes out there and all of a sudden says, "Well, we've got to have a smoother road. We've got to have this. We've got to have that." Why did they buy out there? Because it was explained to me that it was not going to be. And I get too emotional over this, so I'll leave. But I don't... obviously, I'm not into any fixing. And that... because it's just unfair. Like, on your map, you show 120 acres outside the area, right south. And the owner told me he bought easement through the Lost Lake Development. He doesn't have easement on the Camp 20. And why isn't he being charged? He uses that road as an ingress and egress to his property. And how many other unfair things are going on. We have a developer developing up around No Name and South Tom. He's got it all surveyed by Ray Hinchey. He's waiting for the road to get fixed, so then he'll break it up into the smallest possible pieces he can and make his fortune with us paying for his racetrack. You know, there's a lot... there's people, most of that I've seen here, and I'm surprised, and I'm happy to see so many of my neighbors here. And we just want to be out in the woods and live. We'll slow down. You know, if you don't slow down, you're going to wreck your truck or kill somebody. Just leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Todd Williams. I've got a place on Lost Lake. I've been up there 20 years. While I did send out the initial petition to see if there was any interest in improving the road, I agree with the previous speakers that going from a minimalist approach, which was my approach, this has... seems to be getting blown way out of proportion, cost-wise. I was at a previous Commissioners' meeting, and I asked a specific question about the county's involvement, and if there were any requirements as to road specifications for the county to get involved in this, as far as condition of level of service and condition of the road. And I was told that no, there was not. So, you know, filling a few pot So if, you know, filling a few potholes and replacing a few collapsed culverts, if that's what the citizens wanted, would that even be an option from the county's standpoint? I was told that there were no specifications required for the county to get involved in this. Now, since then, I have been told by some other landowners that they were told that that's not the case. There would have to be county, specific county specifications met. Now, to me, that's no longer government by the people. If the county is requiring that, that, in my opinion, would be a deal breaker. So I would like clarification on that question, please. Can anybody clarify that for me?
I don't know, other than...
Just a very quick answer. I will simply say that as Highway Engineer Kristen Foster mentioned, the level of service is negotiated between the designated person for the SGSD and the Highway Department.
So there are no minimum requirements that the county has? So if we just, if we just want to fill some potholes?
No specific, no specific minimum requirements, however.
However?
However, is there the perception that these are, that the road is going to be passable by emergency vehicles? Part of the issue is here is, there's a whole lot of people here that are looking to us for answers, but it's this group that's going to have to tell us what you want. There was, there was a proposal by Firewise that, that roads that are subordinated, included in SGSDs are brushed out wide enough to allow for emergency services vehicles. There's the issue of, if there isn't a minimum standard, who's going to want, who's going to want to bid on the maintenance of this project if it's going to wreck their vehicles to do it, or they can't get in and out? There's a lot of questions that are unresolved, but the level of service is determined by the SGSD in negotiation with the Highway Department. So it is up to you to set that level if you want to formalize this process and ask the county to facilitate that for you. And there are other factors that will come into play as to whether or not that is something that you can successfully achieve.
Other factors being?
If there's a, if there's a contractor who wants to take the job.
I see.
If there's, if there is a requirement to provide emergency response on roads that have some level of service. There...
Well, who's going to, whose requirement is that? Is that the county's requirement? That's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
I can't, honestly, I don't remember, but Firewise had asked that their clearing standards be incorporated in the SGSD policy. Kristen, did we include that in this draft, or is, so that, so those Firewise standards are included in the policy? The policy has not been approved by the board. So the, the answer to the question is, there's a lot of moving pieces. But the first piece after the SGSD is established is for the point person for that group, who's selected by the group, to negotiate the level of service that it is that you're asking for. And then for the county engineer and administrative staff to work with you to make sure that that is what is represented in the, in the RFPs for contractors. So I'm not saying it's going to be turned into a superhighway. What I'm telling you is there are people in this audience who want a road that they can drive 45 miles an hour on. And there are people in this audience who want a road, they're just the way that it is.
Yeah.
There, people have different expectations of that road in this room. If you all had the same expectations to leave it alone, this would not have come forward.
Yeah. And I'm beginning to feel that way myself. There's just, there's just too many gray areas here that, that we don't have answers for, and I guess, in my opinion, it's just, it's time to retreat and regroup and rethink this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Hong Lo, and like my sister Judy, I've been coming up here since I was, well, even longer, because I'm older than she is. But I agree with everything that's been said so far, the reasons, the speed, the desire to keep, that the road is adequate for our purposes. But I'm, when I just heard Mr. Williams talk, I thought, well, first I got upset when I walk in here and I find out you're already talking about this designation of this as a, this district, this special district, and it sounds like you're ready to, once you have this other formal hearing, you're ready to vote to actually do that for this particular area. Is that right?
No, it's just, that's a requirement. That's just the, the only way it could happen, is if...
Okay. So you're not really, you're not within a month of deciding.
No. Not necessarily.
Because that would be alarming to me.
That's what this, that's what the hearing is about.
One of my real concerns is, is the communication, and maybe this is just the way, muddled way in which anything bureaucratic happens. And so I shouldn't be surprised. But when Mr. Williams finds out, you know, that things aren't quite what he was told, and, and he's changing his mind about what he wants, you know, it's like something's getting just larger and growing beyond what you needed. If, when you talk about one person, I just saw this and just now, a few minutes ago, read that one person would be, if you had this district, one person would be designated. Well, who in the world would that be? I mean, who would, who would represent all these people? We don't, you know, you're saying, Mr. Cadwell, that there are people here who want to drive 45 miles an hour in, in this room, and some of us are wondering, you know, how many people are, who are they, and how many, or how many people do want to do that? What is the majority? How do you get a consensus about something like this? I've not talked to many people yet, but I, and no one I've talked to is for this in the slightest. I am a property owner on several, shared ownership. One is a trust, and one is with my family's grandchildren. And it's on the prop, on the map as if it's going to be responsible, but it's on the bottom of the map, and those acreages never go past 70. We don't need to be in there. So whoever put the map together doesn't know that. I mean, has a, you know, I don't know what their criteria are quite for putting it on the map, but some of that is in error. I think you'd agree with me if I took the time to explain it more. But, so I'm concerned about communication, I'm concerned about process. I myself, even though I own six parcels that are on your property, I have not gotten that letter about this meeting. And I don't know why that is. But that's worrisome to me. Who else didn't get this and is not here and would like to be here? So I'm concerned about process, consensus, the method of this. I'm a little concerned about having one person speak for us, because we don't know each other. I've seen most of you not, you don't know me, I don't know you. And I am glad for the opportunity to see people, and I would much prefer to have some kind of an association and keep the county out of it, the government out of it. I'd rather do that.
Thank you.
My name is Deb Alexander, and our family has owned seasonal property up here for, since 1999, for 20 years. And we signed the original petition, and I wanted, with your permission, to point out some things on the map that's being displayed. I'll try to talk loud. The original petition went from here to here, and quite a large proportion of the people who signed it live over here in Earl Valley. Since we signed it, something happened, and I'm going to ask what happened, that it went a longer distance up a completely other direction. And the worst parts of the road are the very beginning here, and this degraded portion of Greenwood River Road right here. In here, because of Firewise, a little history here, there was improvement made to widen the road to about 16 feet and to gravel it, and the grading was minimal, and it made it a lot more pleasant to drive up. Greenwood River has gotten really washed out, and is really kind of dangerous for anything but a really big vehicle now. So the point I wanted to make is, we felt that there was a bit of a bait and switch, and we were trying to talk about what happened. And I thought, I looked up the Incident Command, Minnick's site, and this is the road that's going to be used in case of an incident to attach two heliports, one at Lost Lake and one up at the top of this route. And I wanted to ask whoever is with Firewise, was this change made to make it more safe, to allow there to be helicopter service? Can someone fill us in on, on how it changed and why? Because we felt like this isn't what we had signed.
I'll be the speaker coming up, and I'll address that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm a property owner up there for 20 years or so. I'm going to turn around to the crowd here so that all of you can throw dead fruit at me, because I'm the guy that I think most of you are basically blaming. Let me first of all just address Deb's question, because I, I got in touch with Todd when I received his initial proposal, and he and I got together, and it was my idea to change the map. And the reason that I did that is because I knew the history of what was going on vis-a-vis the Firewise project.
Mr. Sheaf, could you speak to the board and the microphone so we can hear? Thank you.
Let me go to the map, and I'll explain the, the reason the map was changed.
The Camp 20 road has a specific start and end. The start is here at Hong Hill, and the end is the Camp 15 loop. That is the area that the Firewise group did in 2002, 2003.
No, it's not.
2007.
They went there. They started the Lost Lake road.
Okay. That's, that's fine. They, they did stop here, and I don't know the reason for that.
If you're a real thereback, they want to develop, just like you did.
The term is was...
Well, need to...
Again, because of the various parties that are up in that area.
Please let the speaker talk, and then your comments I will gladly accept here at the table.
Camp 15 has been always the definition of the project and the emphasis. This is an area here that benefits a subset of the homeowners. Island View is another subset. So there's four branches. There's the Lost Lake area. They have their own road association for development and maintenance of their own road. Island View does not have a road association for all of it. There may be some that is up in this area that is a subset. There is nothing that I'm aware of over here, and there's nothing on the Camp 15 loop. Point I'm making is, Camp 15, Camp 20 is the main artery that benefits the entire area. In order to come off in this area, you cut off this group here, and there's a beneficial to this group only. In other words, you know, all of the area then pays for, you know, this area. Now, it may be a subject for broader discussion. Maybe that's, you know, the consensus of it. But Camp 20 Road and the overall definition of this project is Camp 20. Is this corridor in red? So that is the reason why it was changed. Strictly the Camp 20, and then there are the branches which could be, the people up in this area, maybe they decide to develop and, and maintain that section or any of the other sections to the other four branches.
I, I just had a, a couple of comments about the general policy, and Todd addressed one of them, and that is the, the general tenor of the policy as to whether the language is intended to be mandatory or recommended. I draw attention to, under the procedures, number four, where the roadway services specifications will be developed by the Cook County Highway Department. I, I think that in listening to the prior people also from the Kelly Hill group, there was some question as to, you know, the, the relative rules. And Jeff has pointed out that it's negotiated. I, I think that's, I, I think that's beneficial, and I think it, it just helps both sides to have input. But by my way of thinking, the Highway Department is the expert, and any efforts that are done on any of these subordinate service districts, be it Camp 20 or smaller ones, should rely on the best available advice, and in my opinion, that would be the county engineering services. The Camp 20 effort is, is difficult to get our arms around, because I don't think anyone in our group has really an idea of the costs involved. We have an issue involving an initial project cost, which is really potentially significant if it is based on, in fact, the, basically the Firewise standard, the emergency services standard, which is, which is what I would support. Jeff mentioned people wanting to go 45 miles on, miles an hour on the road. Might have had me in mind on that. I hope not. I'm not advising or recommending any kind of a standard like that. To me, having a smooth road, one which can efficiently be accessed by emergency vehicles, probably in the neighborhood of a maximum of maybe 25, is just fine. So in, in our case, it would help our group tremendously if we had some guidance as to what the costs are in order to bring this up to that standard, and whether or not it is possible for us to decide that, you know, hey, we don't want to have it up to that standard. So we are just flying blind as the small group that, that has been talking about this as to what $70,000 means, what $300,000 may mean.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are you doing time? Are you paying attention to time? Okay.
We're talking about the history of the Camp 20 road.
Please step up to the table and sign in, please, then we'll hear your comments.
I want to say something about the history of the Camp 20 road. When I bought my property...
Ma'am, can you sign in, please?
When I bought my property from the lumber company in 1990, the road was maintained by the county because they had a gravel pit there that they used. And sometime later, I openly ran, because I only used it in summertime, and I didn't know about it. Sometime later, the county decided not to use that gravel pit anymore. Is that correct? Does everybody remember that? Okay. So I was disappointed because the road started to look really bad. And then my neighbors went out with buckets of rocks, and they filled in the big potholes. Does everybody remember that? Is my neighbor who did that here? Because the... Because the gravel pit was still there, we could get gravel by the bucket load and put it into the potholes and everything was good. So now, you know, 20, 30 years later, I'm disappointed that the county stopped maintaining the road. I'm disappointed that they stopped using the gravel pit. Why did they stop using the gravel pit? The gravel's still there. And they would need the road maintained if they used that gravel pit. So it's a catch 22, isn't it? So maybe we should all go out with buckets and get gravel from the gravel pit and fill in those potholes because I can't see any other solution we could agree on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name, ma'am?
Barbara.
Barbara Wright?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Charlie Glassford and we have property on Camp 20 Road, it's about a mile up. We're so pleased to be a part of your community even though we don't live here year-round. We've been coming up here for many years and finally took the plunge and now we have a little cabin up on Camp 20 Road. We come from an environmentalist point of view. We are interested in the forest stewardship. We are interested in being, much as we love people, when we're up there, we like to be away from people. It's nice to see you all today and we should have a potluck or something sometime. And then there'll be times we leave each other alone. And that's why we're up there. So I want to talk to you about the character and I don't know how many of you have been up on Camp 20 Road, but the character of that area, it seems to me, is that people like to be apart from their neighbors. They like to be able to see the night sky without the lights of their neighbor or pretty much anything else. They like to be able to observe the wildlife and take care of nature. If somebody wants to have a very nice house and have a lot of the conveniences of home and be able to get to it readily, they would have been ill-advised to buy property up on that road. So I'm talking about the character as we perceived it when we bought and as I think most of the people there feel what the character is, which is that it's pretty rustic, it's pretty rural. I have a question about what happened here because I signed that petition. I would not have signed the petition knowing how this was going to play out. So I rescind my signature of the petition. And I'd like to know if anyone can tell me, with all respect to Mr. Sheaf, how he managed to change what was proposed from the petition that was signed? Does anybody know what happened there?
It goes around...
Yes. Well, I mean, he doesn't get to set the agenda here.
We will let Auditor Brady?
No, he didn't change it. In fact, that petition is still valid.
Okay.
It's as valid as it was. The board doesn't actually, they use the petition as information because we haven't determined the election provisions within that statute.
All right.
We're not sure of those, the use of that, so the board actually uses those petitions as a guideline for what to do.
Got it.
So that's as valid as it was the day you signed it. This is an additional proposal that came out when John talked to Todd. They don't even all agree on it at this point. The people that were tied, there were other people involved from your area.
Thank you. All right. So, I mean, what I'm saying is that what brought us here is a petition that was signed by a number of people, most of whom seem to be telling you that what we're talking about now is not what we had in mind. I'm also concerned about the standards that might be imposed. I understand Mr. Cadwell telling us that those standards are negotiable and will be penned, but now we've got people like Firewise who may want to put their ore in there and we've got owners like Mr. Sheaf who probably want more of a road than what most of us have been talking about. But once that process starts and the county becomes involved, it seems to me that we, the landowners, have lost control over what that becomes. And I acknowledge that your policy says that we would choose one of our number and as you can tell, there are a lot of us who is somehow deputized to negotiate with the highway department about what it's going to be. But that strikes me as rather problematic because as somebody said earlier, how is that person going to speak for the whole group? I feel as if we're going to lose a level of control over what happens on that road, which is precious to us. And so for that reason, I urge that you not proceed with this. And I love Butch's quote, "We just want to be out in the woods and live."
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Jason Mazenbrink. Hope you forgive me, I'm a little bit nervous. I just want to speak in opposition to this idea, this proposal. It seems to me like even those who, most of who generated the proposal are in opposition to the proposal. And so I think that you should consider that carefully. I bought property in the area that we're talking about in 1991. I knew what the road was like then. My hope is to retire there and that's not that far off, hopefully. And so I don't just speak as an occasional user, I speak as someone planning to live there. I think that we knew what it was. The people that want a lot better road than is there probably did not consider the rest of us when they decided to put up their bigger houses or cabins or want to make these improvements. So we could get, I'm a full-time auto mechanic and also a recovery specialist formerly with Cook County Towing. I was their first call for crashes. And so I know a bit about the wear and tear on the cars and the supposed safety of a better road, neither of which holds any water to me and I'd be happy to explain that to anybody that wants to ask. I won't waste your time with it here, but I want to be on record as in opposition to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Lowe. I've been coming up every year for 52 years, except for one of those.
Please begin the microphone.
I bought two 40s two years ago from my grandfather's estate. And item four of that deed clearly states that, and it's on Camp 20, that lack of record access to and from real property herein conveyed in that Camp 20 Road is not considered a public road and as such grantor herein does not warrant record access to and from such a property. I was fully aware of this, fully accepted it, and the reason I bought the property was because it was remote, it was rural, and I wanted to preserve that. I don't intend to habitate it. I plan to conserve it. I bought it so that it would be preserved in that condition. It's a destination, hiking destination from our nearby cabins. We hike down Camp 20 Road for the very reasons that earlier speakers have said, because you have a better chance of seeing wildlife down that road than if you turn right off Hong Hill and go down 70. Item four of the conditional easement for the, Camp 20 goes right through one of my 40s. And so I grant an easement for the use of Camp 20. And item four of the conditional easement says included in the easement is the right to maintain and construct and rebuild that road to the trust for public land. So I have granted already the right for maintaining that road to the trust for public land. And if the county wants to come in and do that, I would like to have a discussion with about granting the right or re-granting that right because I've already given that right away. I do not, I would like to preserve the road as is. I believe I already have an agreement in place for the maintenance of it and I would prefer things remain. Thank you.
Mr. Sheaf has commented that his group, a lot of, he is asking for clarification for his group. I haven't heard any other speakers speaking in favor of this, so I would just ask to ask for a show of hands who else in the audience is for this proposal?
The original? Yes.
No, as proposed. Okay. So we have, and Mr. Sheaf, you didn't raise your hand, but you're for. So I saw four hands. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, commissioners, my name is Sharon Croning and I'm one of the landowners in the proposed SGSD. And I just wanted to voice my opinion that I am not in support of the project given its current scope and the uncertainties over the level of maintenance on the road that would be required under this mechanism.
Thank you.
I'm nervous too.
My name is Andy Stolen. I live on the very end of the Camp 20, right where you're going to stop. That's where my property is. I know everybody that lives, there's two other people that live up there with me, around me, they don't want it. Who thinks that...
Please, please sign in first. Thank you.
Who thinks that the no-name hill is going to hold gravel? When Firewise funds came through 14, 13 years ago, I'm not sure what it was, it didn't hold gravel for three weeks, no-name hill. It's like that. Are we blacktopping it? Because that doesn't make, it just doesn't make any sense at all to me. No-name hill will not hold gravel. I don't know how it ever got up that far, but I know everybody around me that lives there and have cabins around there does not want this road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joyce Lamb. We have some property up off of Island View. Initially, my husband and I were supportive of a road improvement and we wanted to do this simply for the preservation of our car and getting back and forth. However, there's a lot of issues that have arisen since that original discussion. It seems to me that there are several issues that the group has that we would like to have clarified. I think the first one is who makes the decision whether this SGS goes forward or not? I get the impression that the landowners would like to have the say on that versus the commission. So my suggestion would be number one, that there is a vote sent out to all the landowners. The first question is yes or no. If the vote is yes, then the question is to what extent should the road be improved? Are we talking about minimal grading and culverts or are we talking about a much broader, much more expensive type of proposition? I think there's a lot of money that could be spent, but I also think that a minimal amount of gravel and grading would improve the road, but certainly maintain the character of the road. And thirdly, there's been a discussion about if this is a yes, go ahead, how is that money assessed? I would like to propose, I'd like to see that done by usage of the road, which is something that was mentioned for the previous SGSD in terms of the distance traveled on the road. Therefore, those people that live closest to Hong Hill would be, pay a much less proportionate share than the individuals who would use the entire road. So in conclusion, I think that the landowners need to make the decision yes or no. And if it is a yes, then it leads on to all those other issues that I proposed. But bottom line, let's let the people decide. Thank you.
Madam Chair, you had stated this would run until 10:30. I would like... 9:45. Okay. Okay. It's been 45 minutes. So we're getting down to the last 10 minutes, so if you can even be more brief than five...
Madam Chair and committee members, I'd just like to put my position on the road. I own at Lost Lake on the south part of the lake and I bought in 1998. When I first bought, I bought it in the winter and you could drive it really nice because the ice filled everything up and there were no dips. But over the years, and when it's spring, I thought, oh man, what did I buy? But it wasn't so bad. You could drive maybe tops 15 miles an hour and I'm okay with that. Today, I don't, I only get up there twice a year. And some of the puddles I've seen are, all I want is some bigger rock, maybe four inch, three inch, so they don't wash out. I'm not for making it into a county road, but just something so I don't bottom out. I can't see what's in a puddle. I don't drive it all the time. And I don't want to be in someone's driveway parched with my car with an oil pan out if I hit something. But I like the remoteness of it. I don't want it to be county road standard. If it was just so that the puddles were out of it and you could drive maybe 15 miles an hour, that's what I'm in favor for. So how we come to do that as a group, we should all get together and see what speed people want to drive on that road and what's acceptable to them. Because roads are, people have different perceptions what they want to drive on there. We could all get a Humvee and sure, you can go 20 miles an hour and pay for your suspension, but what kind of cars do you have and what do you want to drive in? I've gone in on a Ford Escort and had no problems at, you know, five miles an hour. But if you have a lower clearance car with a wider wheelbase, you might have, I've hit my oil pans on rocks, but...
Okay, thank you, so we can have...
All right.
Fewer comments. Getting short.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Bob Evans. I have, my wife and I own 180 acres like the gentleman before, up off the Camp 20 Road beyond your map a little ways. And initially, when I heard about this project, I thought, well, we originally bought that property just so that we could get, go back there, sit on one of the bluffs and look out and basically be. And I thought, well, it's a little selfish to be thinking that there are other people that may have dwellings on that road that need access maybe for fire control. And so I was willing to think, well, okay, that's, that makes sense. But what I'm hearing is that that isn't the case. And so I would just voice my opposition to some great improvement of that road. Myself, I, in order to get to our property, sometimes we just decide, well, we're going to take an ATV because the road is difficult. But I would, I would say that I would even cross-country ski or hike it to get back there if I couldn't use the road and that would be sufficient. So just briefly, if all of my neighbors are against it, I would, I would add my name to the list. And I would think that the county should provide the address, the names and address, names and addresses of all the people that got the letters so that if this group of individuals and owners decided to get together, they could do that a lot more easily. So my recommendation would be for the county to provide that list to everyone who received letters for this, to discuss this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tanya Benson. We are at 1911 Camp 20, so you would stop where Camp 20, we are still a mile from where the proposed project would stop. So when we look at the road, the road is really, really good up until the point where you're going to stop, then it gets really, really bad. So I think the road so far is perfect. We... And we bought the property knowing that it was going to be that way. We knew we were going to have to get four-wheelers or an ATV of some sort to make the trek that lasts three miles to the cabin. And that's part of the adventure and part of the journey. Sometimes it's forty minutes, sometimes it's an hour, but it's still fun, you know? And I think, you know, fixing it, you can fix it for a while, but then it's just going to, it's weather. It's wear and tear. It's the environment. It's, it is what it is. And I, we're opposed to it. We don't want to take the beauty away from it. That's why we are here. We want to be in the woods with our nine-year-old daughter, who absolutely loves it. And it's hard, you know, for kids to do that nowadays, so it's, we're opposed. Thanks.
Thank you. And this will be the last comment.
Save the best for last. Sorry if I'm not really all first, but this is how passionate I am about this road. I did not buy that property without seeing that road. That's one of the reasons why I bought it. It's all in private property. Why don't we have the county prop sign at the beginning saying, "Private property, owners only"? Then we wouldn't have these four-wheelers coming through there eight at a time, wide open, when they could be in Gilbert, where they have an area set aside for them to do that. They are wrecking our road more than it already has been wrecked. There's extra traffic coming in. I've had two break-ins in the last three years due to the extra traffic, people that don't belong back there. So I am definitely against this period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, why don't you just have a show of hands of who's for, who's against it? Who's against the road? Show of hand. Who's for the road? What are we doing here? We all have a lot of-
Okay, thank you.
Well, to follow up on that, wasn't this started out by the first speaker asking that since this wasn't published, this could go away if there wasn't support for it? And I think that show of hands just demonstrated that.
Thank you.
Can we follow up on that comment?
Thank you.
I didn't get a letter.
Please take over the meeting.
I represent-
I need you to come to the front. If you want to comment, you have three minutes.
Madam Chair, there's people in the hallway waiting for the agenda. We, it's not a public hearing.
I'm Tom, Tom Lowe. I've been doing taxes on hundred-some acres off Hong Hill. Thirty-six acres is included for this. We don't use that access. I'm amazed to find this. I didn't get a letter. If I didn't get a letter, why not? That's my question. Shouldn't all twenty-some, or close to twenty-some people on that deed be getting letters? Don't those people get to vote? Is it a developer and a couple other people who can mandate that the county acts, set up this tax? If we don't pay, then we're forfeited? I really don't understand the process here, and nothing I've heard in this meeting so far makes that clear. The other thing goes back to Butch's early comment. This is a private road. That has been defined by my daughter here. I don't understand why the county is even involved in this. This sounds like a homeowners' association.
Thank you.
Yep.
So at this time, I will, I will receive a motion. This isn't a public hearing, we're just going to close it. We will take a break. We'll have a five-minute break.
Hey. Good, how are you?
We're coming back.
Susan's comments.
This is the border, the border, right?
Yeah. Okay. Yep.
What happened to it?
It's been a few minutes since, so, June, the beginning of June?
Slam the hammer, sister.
This is kind of why I didn't want to break.
Run the meeting. Yes, ma'am.
What do you want to do next? I think Kristen, are we gonna, are you gonna ask?
I always have, like, five requests.
I think, I know that I would appreciate an opportunity to just clarify our obligations given there was suggestion that we have to do that. And then clarify how this matter came to the county.
Should we approach the-
You can, but I, you can come here, but let me be clear with you, you are on camera and being recorded.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Yeah.
So we'll address Kelly Hill Thursday, and I'll-
Oh, yeah. Wow. Yeah.
Forest Service, you call the Forest Service. You gotta call them. No, no. You could just go to the Forest Service office, right down the road.
I go further on my side.
Hit the hammer. Hammer, hammer.
I go out and have gobble at Butch. Yeah, I go out and have gobble at Butch.
So we're going to proceed and reopen the board, the county board?
We're closed.
Open, close. What are we? So fellow commissioners, we have before us a couple of items now to talk about. First, the Kelly Hill Road Association petition.
Madam Chair, we shouldn't consider the matter related to Kelly Hill until we consider the matter related to the SGSD policy. So I would ask Kristen to come forward, and perhaps it's appropriate for the commissioners to ask her any questions they have of the policy before we get to specifically addressing. And we need to consider the policy before we consider the Kelly Hill SGSD that was held in a public hearing this morning.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this morning, we have summarized the policy overall and talked about some of the changes that have been made in response to questions that were raised at July Committee of the whole. However, in paging through it, and I imagine there were others here doing the same, I realized that the July version of the policy was copied for today's handout instead of the updated policy. I sincerely apologize for that. I should have allowed myself more time to review the handouts this morning. But that said, I'm not recommending any action on the policy itself today. I'm glad we had the opportunity to share some of the details and the history with the public, but the Highway Department will be submitting the updated policy for a future meeting. I just wanted to clarify that. But I'm happy to take any questions on the policy itself today.
Question, Commissioner Duker.
So if we approve a subordinate service district today, does that mean they're approved under the old policy?
I, I think, may I address that? Madam Chair. I think that the board would be wise to wait on the Kelly Hill SGSD until you've either approved or not approved the proposed policy, both for, you know, the county's information as to, you know, what kind of county resources are going to go toward that SGSD, and also for the benefit of the residents, so they know what they're getting into. So that would be my advice.
And that's what I was thinking. I'll just address the Firewise questions from this morning, since I sit on the Firewise The request of the Firewise Committee for this recommendation to be in the new policy for the Subordinate Service District is that in addressing properties to meet Firewise standards, we have found the least amount of standards being met in areas that are not county roads. And as we heard in the meeting this morning, a lot of people would like their wild roads and their wild areas and their wild nature, so that makes sense. It wasn't for helipad, I know that came up. There was no discussion, and I've been on the committee for seven years, there was no discussion of access to helipads to cover that, if anyone's curious. And we did hear from a citizen this morning who stated that they expect the road to be difficult, but that they also expect to receive ambulance service when they call it in, and that is the reason for the addition of the Firewise requirements when we put in a subordinate service district. The minimally maintained roads, as a person who is on a fire department, I will tell you, the minimally maintained roads are the most difficult roads, not only for us to access, but the driveways to enter and the visibility. And so that's why the Firewise portion was added to this, if that helps anybody.
Thank you on that. So at your recommendation, then Attorney Hicken, we'll wait on this, Kelly Hill.
I mean, I think that's up to the board as a whole.
But that's what you recommend. Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that it would be worthwhile to not take action until we really vet out the policy, because it's, it's sort of nebulous what people are signing up for until, I think we need to make that clear, especially process. Some things were mentioned about, you know, mailing to get a vote or something like that. So I would support what our county attorney is recommending on that. Put it on hold till it goes back through some more process.
Do we need a motion to table it, or is it not up for action?
Commissioner Duchamp has a comment.
Yeah, I'd like to know what we are going to do today for the people that are sitting in the audience on the Camp Twenty.
We'll get to that.
When?
Well, as soon as we, as soon as we take care of-
They're just waiting for a decision whether we're going to proceed with it or not.
Yes. We're going to take care of Kelly Hill first.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd just, again, remind us that the decision is about whether the board wants to proceed with Kelly Hill before they decide and vote upon the subordinate governmental service district policy. governmental service district policy. We're not dealing with Kelly Hill until we deal with the question of whether or not we're going to address the policy today or not. And then you could still decide you want to work on Kelly Hill. Related to Camp 20 Road, this was not the requisite public hearing before the board can do anything about that. So the only thing to be done is for the property owners to affirm with Brady that they want to hold a public hearing to ask the board, to petition the board to carry this forward. It is up to the people who live on Camp 20 to affirm the fact that they want to have a public hearing. It hasn't been scheduled to this point.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, could I clarify a bit what the county's statutory responsibilities are regarding Camp 20? So there are two ways that a subordinate governmental service district can be created. There is 375B-05, I'm sorry, 04, which is creation by county board. That is not what the county has in front of it today. The second way to create an SGSD is by petition. The reason the public hearing for Camp 20 needs to be set or is required to be set is because the county received a petition from 10% of qualified voters within the defined district. And the county is required to hold a public hearing within 30 days of verifying that those petitions or that that 10% of qualified voters were represented on the petition. Just because the petition came forward with the 10% of qualified voters required does not mean that the county is then required to create the SGSD. They're required to have the, to have the public hearing. So that's why it's, I think we need to rely on the original petition and we need to set that public hearing still. All of the people who appeared today, you know, were certainly heard and their comments can be taken into consideration when the county decides whether or not to create or establish an SGSD. I also would like to address what the statute says regarding the level of service. When the county board on its own establishes an SGSD without a petition process, the county board establishes the level of service for the SGSD. When the county board establishes an SGSD based on a petition, the statute does not require that the level of service be also defined as part of that establishment. So what defines the service level is the county's policy. The proposed policy that Engineer Foster has brought forward, and this part is pretty consistent with how it's worked in the past, is that the residents within the defined district appoint a representative for the district, that representative interacts with the Highway Department in order to represent what the district's desires are regarding service level. And then the Highway Department sets the service level consistent with that request.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How do we navigate or address kind of some of the concerns we heard about the scope changing from the original petition?
In the, in 375B-05, creation of the SGSD by petition, the petition has to include a map which defines the borders. When the commissioners act after the public hearing, the statute does say that a resolution approving the creation of the district may contain amendments or modifications of the district's boundaries or functions as set forth in the petition. So the county board may amend the boundary districts as they see fit and as the record supports.
Thank you.
I have a question about the border requirement.
You had your chance to speak. Now we're going to discuss this. Commissioner Duker?
I'm just curious if any of my fellow commissioners are interested in passing the subordinate service district policy. This isn't the one, but I mean, we've all had an opportunity to read the adjustments. I'm just wondering if any of you are comfortable doing that today or you want to wait till August 27?
Could members of your commission please speak up, please?
Sorry.
I would be much more comfortable waiting.
Okay.
Dead agreement?
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to ask if the board feels you have enough background information to consider action as soon as August 27th, or if you would like me to come back with more information or take the procedure back through committee before we bring it forward for a future board meeting?
I'm ready.
Yeah, I would just want to see the final before we proceed. I don't, I mean, this is looking in the right direction, but that wasn't the details, eh?
Okay, Commissioner.
So just to clarify your question, you're sort of asking for some direction as to whether this should go back to some kind of committee study like Highway and Public Safety before it comes back here, or do we just say, well, we have it? In response to that, I really don't want to adopt anything until it's in the board minute, you know, in our agenda and that people can look at it and act to it. So whether it goes to a committee or not, I think that's a matter of process, but I just don't think we should be acting on anything unless it's in writing and it's part of the agenda.
Okay, so you're asking the same thing that she stated, that she would redo this, bring it up to?
I think maybe the first, I guess, go back is, did I hear you say that you were looking for some direction or whether this should go back to like a group, like the Highway and Public Safety Group and then come here, or just take what we've accomplished so far and submit that in August? And I guess I would like to, I want to thank everyone because I learned a lot here and I think we all need to do that, you know, and monitor and adjust accordingly. So I was involved in the initial discussions on this and I think it'd be good to have a discussion again.
So we understand?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Burschine, yes, that is my question exactly. The Highway Department does have the current policy with the changes drafted. It was a error in publishing and I apologize for that, that it wasn't ready for today's meeting. I could, I'm ready to bring that back for full board consideration on August 27. If not, there is a Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for August 28th and the Highway Department could then bring the policy with revisions back to the board in September after it's been reviewed at the committee level based on some of the questions we heard this morning.
Okay.
I'm ready for August 27.
Okay. We are, we are ready for August 27. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then Attorney Molly Hicken had some comment. Did you still want to continue with Camp 20, some of the things you heard this morning?
I think I made clear what I, I thought it was important to make clear for the board. You do need to set a date and time for the public hearing for Camp 20 regardless of whether, you know, that is followed by establishment of the district or not.
And we do that within 30 days. So Brady, do we want to do it on the 27th or the first part of September? How do you feel about it?
The soonest you could do it would be the 27th. If you set that today, you could do that. We would put that in the newspaper.
Commissioner DeCham?
I make a motion to set the public hearing for the Camp 20 improvement petition for August 27 at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks to all of you that came. So moving on to board items, we have Bob talking about abatement.
You guys are ready for me then?
Yep.
So I just have the abatement for the Bob Mordini property.
Could you please leave quietly? Thank you.
So I just have the abatement for the Bob Mordini property here. Bob came in and filed an application for abatement and Brady and I are passing it along for you guys to make a decision.
Excuse me. The board has been reconvened and we now have a presenter, so I ask for your cooperation and if you wish to speak about something else, you can step outside. Otherwise, the board is continuing with our agenda. Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, so basically the implications are $196 refund for Bob Mordini's 2019 taxes. His summary was that the property was overvalued and he didn't want to pay more than his fair share.
Motion to approve abatement.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I just want to note that I've been talking with Bob a little bit, Mordini and Bob Thompson, and kind of investigating if there's other options because it had been a number of years, but you know, through our discussions, we discovered and Bob knew this as well, Bob Thompson, that we're limited to one year, you know, going back one year.
Essentially, if anything else would have been done for the previous years, it would have had to been brought to either the county boards or filed in tax court during those times, timeframes that came and went.
Yeah, and so through the conversation with Bob Thompson, Bob, Bob Mordini, if he did want to pursue anything further, it was recommended to investigate with the state, but I think he's kind of gone down that road in the past and hasn't procured anything, so just for context there.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Commissioners, I have for you today a kind of a continuation of a process that had started. This is as we are going on our way towards the implementation of the licensing program for vacation rentals. We had passed the ordinance establishing the program which, which will, the effective date will begin on January 1st of this next year, 2020. I came to the board and received authorization to go out on RFPs last month to solicit the services for a compliance monitoring company that would assist us in the implementation and monitoring of the vacation rental licenses. We specifically wanted to do that because we wanted to seek out whether there would be any local businesses that would want to participate in the program and we certainly want to encourage that as much as we can. Regrettably, we did not receive any proposals in from any local entities. The one response that I got back was just due to logistics and the fact that nobody is already in that type of business. It would just take too much funds and logistics and be cost prohibitive for anybody local to be doing that. And surprisingly enough, though, we did get three proposals in, all of which were out of state. One company, CGI, is a generalized computer consulting firm out of Colorado. They, their quote was quite substantial in size and it was clear in looking at the proposal that they did not, they don't actually do that type of business right now, although we figure they're very well capable to develop that, but they aren't currently active in that. So in the fact that they don't really have any experience in that, they were, and the quote was more than twice as much as the other two, they were pretty much set aside. The other two for consideration was one Host Compliance and Lodging Revs, both of which actually have been in the industry for a while and doing exactly what it is that we are looking at for services. And we actually sat through demonstrations for both of them. We looked up both of their references and talked to the different jurisdictions and counties and both which we feel are very well capable of performing those services. Although in looking at the experience level and talking to the references, it was pretty apparent that Host Compliance was well ahead of Lodging Revs in terms of the experience and their clientele and customer base. Lodging Revs is out of Colorado and their, their market is predominantly local and in one of the jurisdictions that we spoke to said is recent as last year, they were basically helping Lodging Revs in developing some of the aspects of their, of their services. So in wanting to get in right of way and have this as a turnkey kind of operation and in looking at the costs, it was a pretty easy determination for us to recommend Host Compliance to accept their proposal and to start working with them so that we can be ready right at the first of the year for when the, when the program starts. So I guess I'll just open it up for any questions, but for today, I'm asking just the board to go ahead and accept the proposal from Host Compliance and to authorize the agreement.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Mills?
I read through everything in the packet. Thank you very much. And I noted also that it's been reviewed by Attorney Hicken and I don't have any specific questions otherwise, but it looks, I appreciate having those three bids to compare and have something to bounce back and just the local interest as well. So, yeah, thank you.
I think we knew which way it was going.
Well, yeah, and the other thing too is it's a one-year contract, so, you know, we can try this for a year, see what we find out, revisit things and if deemed necessary, but.
And actually, Madam Chair and Commissioner Mills, interestingly enough, to Host Compliance has a six-month money-back guarantee where the other two didn't, so we can actually work with them six months as a trial period for them and still get, be able to get our money back. And I would add that the projections with the fees, when we did discuss this with, through the committee process, we had looked and projected about a, well, we started off hoping to have as low a cost of the fee as possible, but in looking at the service providers out there, we did kind of set a look about $200 or not to exceed $200 would, would cover the costs. And in looking at the numbers that are present, that fee would be more than sufficient. Not that I'm asking for that fee now. We would have to come back for when there's a fee hearing to be able to discuss that further, but with the, with the numbers that we're looking at in here, we wouldn't anticipate asking any, any more than that.
Motion to approve Host Compliance?
Second.
I'm wondering in the proposal, do we indicate that it's up, that it's for a year and does that start in January or when does that start?
It does start when we sign the contract. So I've had discussions with them and they said what we'll do is we will get it all approved. They will work with us. We won't sign the contract until we get close to the end of the year, thus making that, taking us all the way through into next year.
Okay. So the end of the year or January?
Is, well, we would actually sign closer to November, sometime in November, just so that they can do their some work, that they will, we will work with them ahead of time to do a lot of the preparatory work, but for actually getting everything situated on the, on the websites and that, we'll take the agreement to do.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Molly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I have for the county board is something that was addressed actually last year ahead of the anticipated closing of the Forest Service and County Land Exchange, but needs to be readdressed because that closing was not finalized and is anticipated to occur this month, although we still don't have a date for the closing. So we're all hoping that it occurs this month. And the feds and the state and the county, all the parties are moving forward with preparing for that. Part of the county's obligations are first to have a county representative, preferably a commissioner, who is authorized to execute the closing paperwork at the time of the closing, so sign. at the time of the closing, so sign. And the second obligation is to make sure that all those third-party interests, so for example, a fire, volunteer fire department that had a land lease to have their fire haul on what was a federal property when it becomes county property, still has that lease. Or somebody who has a utility provider that has a right-of-way, had a right-of-way access when the county, when the land was federal, continues to have that right-of-way access when the property becomes county. So these are all agreements that were actually approved last year. I included in my submission to the agenda in a table, I think it's the last page, the actual dates that the county approved these agreements. They have not been substantially changed. The only thing that happened is that I took out the dates of the closing from 2018 and left a blank, hoping that we'll be able to put a date in there for the closing. You know, I wish that I did have a date for you because I'm now going to ask that a commissioner commit to being the signing authority for the county without being able to give you a date as to when you need to physically be here. The best solution I have for that is that perhaps the board can appoint a commissioner who's willing to be here, appoint an alternate commissioner in case that commissioner is unavailable. And if all else fails, appoint or delegate authority to the county administrator or to the auditor to sign the closing paperwork in the absence of a commissioner.
So we don't know when in August?
No.
I will say upfront that I'm out of town from the 28th on, so I'm good till then, but maybe we should have a couple names. Commissioner Mills?
Can we just delegate everybody?
That any member of the county board? Is authorized to sign? Is authorized to sign.
I mean, for this, I'm not saying always, but for this, you know, land exchange or for this situation.
Because we did have blips last time. Because I think, I think one time I was the chair and it was chair and vice chair authorized. And we couldn't be here because we were in other meetings. I mean, it's not just our schedule or whether or not we're out of town, but I mean, we're in meetings.
Other responsibilities, certainly.
Well, it's a day, isn't it? I mean, don't you have a day like to sign it?
We don't have a day.
I mean, no, the time of the day. Do we have to do it at 10 o'clock in the morning or by the end of the day?
Not been set.
It will be set and it will be done at that point in time.
Okay. I know the day, but I just...
But can we authorize all commissioners for this one thing?
Pretty please.
I mean, I think, I'm just trying to think of how the motion would be worded. But I think you can do that.
Well...
It could be any commissioner who is available.
And maybe we should have an order in operations, starting with?
Chair and vice chair.
Chair, vice chair.
It's a little more specific. We don't want any more glitches in this thing.
Right.
Okay, so here's my swing at it. Motion to authorize the chair or vice chair to sign the Forest Service Land Exchange Agreement.
Closing documents.
Closing documents. If the chair or vice chair are unavailable, Commissioner Mills, Commissioner DuKirk, or Commissioner Dushaw also have authority based upon availability to sign the Forest Service closing documents. Get all that?
Sufficient, from my perspective.
Okay. That was a motion.
Do you want to, may I make a?
You have to second it and then you can ask for an amendment.
Second.
Okay, yes.
Can we also add Administrator Cadwell and Auditor Treasurer Powers as backups?
I think five of us is plenty.
We should be, somebody should be available in Arkansas.
I will amend to add Brady Powers if all five commissioners, because we do go to conferences altogether. So I will amend my motion to include Brady Powers. Do you accept that amendment, Mr. Mills?
I do. Thank you.
There we go.
So we have a motion.
Clarification then. Did you specify the names in order that they should be approached?
Chair and vice chair.
And then Mills.
And then an email will go out.
All of us and then Brady.
I just think it'd be...
We have a bat phone. It's the red phone at your house.
So we have chair, vice chair, and the other commissioners.
Well, she mentions, it's a clarification. She mentioned in order Mills, DuKirk.
It didn't intend to be ordered, just intended to have the correct names on file.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
We should look up in the 112-year history and see if this has ever happened. I don't think it has.
Okay, Brady. Oh, sorry.
I have this, the second item is to delegate signatory authority to the board chair to sign the six separate agreements that are referenced in the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second, I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments?
And that's with the same order of signatory?
No, 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 only the chair.
Only the chair.
And Attorney Hickon has those copies. So I will do that today.
She's here. She can do it.
We'll do that today. That will be accomplished. Okay, motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, Brady.
Madam Chair, this is, this is our annual state payment in lieu of taxes. And the history is there's no decision to be made. The state has already made that decision. And it's just to accept that report. As you can see, the total amount received is $374,494.54, which is almost identical to last year. The breakdown is $35,000 for parks and recreation and the remainder to offset the general fund levy, with some $6,000 some odd dollars that it goes to the various towns based upon the acreage of these state lands within those township boundaries. And I want to ask for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Mills?
Can you maybe point out differences in the process between the state and the federal and as far as the appraised value is concerned?
So how they appraise them?
I was just curious if, I mean, it seemed like a very different process to have.
Yeah. I don't know the specific differences. That would be a good question for Bob or Sisser. Some of these are not done, appraised value, some are done by acreage. And then there's acreage versus valuation. As you can see, the other natural resources in it is just based upon dollars per acre. So each, each one of these things have come up with statute at different times, for different types of state land. And then the next one, acquired acres, is either dollars per acre or appraised value .75%, which is .0075. And you pick the larger of the two and so forth. County-administered other natural resources is a straight $2 an acre. So, different statutes.
That's an interesting question. Well, I make a point of asking.
Thank you.
I'm to look at that. And so it's interesting to me that it didn't change much.
It doesn't because these statutes don't, those percentages in dollar amounts don't change much from year to year. And the percentage at .075, unless they change the statute, that's the same. The dollars per acre do change over time.
Right.
But the method of acreage changes very little. It depends if something goes into a scientific and natural area or, you know, there's a trade or something like that. But generally, it doesn't, this has been very stable over the years, other than when they asked the assessor to look at evaluation a couple of years ago and they didn't even accept the assessor's valuation method. And so they picked a number which was very low. And then we had to then resubmit the valuation and some of the acreage. And then they then subsequently restored as an attribute to what you see now, which is very much in line with what we received over the years with some slight increase.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I guess, I'm sorry, just to understand a little bit more. It's talking about the acquired acres, 9,000 blah 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 at 5.13 is 48, or the appraised value of acquired acres. And so is this acquired, not just this year, right?
No, this is historically...
And so the appraisal, I would think, would change over time. Increase the value, I mean, isn't that?
It can, yeah.
Right. And that's why I find it interesting that it hasn't much.
So I will ask Bob, he may be able to put something together and give a short presentation as to that valuation method.
Thank you.
So I would just ask for a motion to accept that report. It's unruft?
Support.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next item is an application for a bike trail grant. This is from the Superior Cycling Association. Tim Kennedy is here today. So this would be the fourth grant to be applied towards the connector trail from Britton Peak to Litzin. We've had the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails grant. We've had a federal recreational program grant. We've had ITRRB grant. And this is the fourth.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is the fourth grant, and I think probably the final grant for the completion of this trail. It's a Legislative Commission on Minnesota Resources grant for $350,000 that was granted to the Superior Cycling Association. And what we're here today is just to ask that the county board act as the fiscal agent for this grant, which you've been for the last, for the other three grants, and also ask for an amendment to the Cooperative Project Management Services Agreement that has been in place for those other three grants to reflect that.
Comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
So I would say then the first motion should be for the resolution to support the application. So that resolution is in the board packet. And then maybe address the contract second, so...
So mine is just the first portion that's in the packet.
For the application?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
And so the second question would be to adjust that contract that the county has...
The Management Services Agreement.
Management Services Agreement. And that would have to be approved subject to the county attorney reviewing that. It's, I think it would be a small change.
Yeah, and we did that for the ITRRB grant. We amended that because the original agreement was for the FRTP, Federal Recreational Trail Program Grant, and the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Legacy Funding. And so that, that agreement was amended once already to include the ITRRB grant. And we're asking to amend it again to include the LCCMR grant.
I'd make a motion, or I guess we have that. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment off of Attorney Hickon's review.
Support.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think we would also need the board to, unless, unless you're okay with delaying signing that Management Services Agreement until the next board meeting, I think you also need to delegate authority to sign the, whatever agreement comes out of it and is approved or reviewed by the county attorney to somebody, whether it's Brady Powers or the board chair. Otherwise, we'll have to come back with the agreement and ask that you authorize it to be signed. It's a, it's a tweak. It's a technical thing, but...
Okay.
Commissioner Mills, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, with delegating Chair Starley as the signatory.
I support that amendment.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for waiting.
Okay, we'll move on to Jeff and maintenance worker.
Madam Chair, if I could take the item that we added today and just do that first because it's really simple and it's along the same lines as the amendment that Attorney Hickon just made. And that would be to designate authority to County Administrator Cadwell to sign all contracts for window replacements according to the bid that was awarded on July 23rd to St. Germain's Glass.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you. And then we had Sean Swearingen on our Highway Department resigned as maintenance worker three last week. That will be effective as of 8/16/2019. And we're asking that the board accept the resignation and approve the posting for that vacancy. And our intention is to post that vacancy internally first for 10 days and determine if there's interest before we would post it publicly.
I'll make that motion with regrets. Sean has been a great asset to our Highway Department.
Seconded.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ty Blatnick.
Next item, Madam Chair, is simply a copy of the letter that was submitted along with the comments from Cook and Lake in St. Louis County and the reports submitted by the assessor's office from each of those three counties. This is the cover letter that was authorized and signed by all three board chairs simply saying, here is our response to the appraisal that we received on June 13th, 2019, stating, stating that we had concerns about the appraisal and the appraisal process that was used to determine the valuation that our Ty Blatnick payments were calculated from. I have the additional, the summary letter that was produced by John Vegan at the request of the three counties, and the report that was prepared by Assessor Thompson. I'll distribute those to you as well after this. But I just wanted you to know that we met that deadline. This was submitted on July 31st. It was a coordinated effort. There were a lot of people involved in that. And I've asked Matt Huddleston from Lake County and John Angaro from St. Louis County, what's an appropriate amount of time that we wait to get a response before we ask for a response to this letter? And it's just an update that will keep you apprised of any, anything that we learned through this process.
Thank you. So we had information on one item. We'll move on to budget discussions, unless you have something you want to...
Madam Chair, I have two other items on the agenda. The Nemojet, the Northeast Minnesota Opportunity... I have to go down and find it.
I believe it's Nemojet.
Nemojet.
Nemojet. It's French. Anyway, the contract, this agreement, the changes in language are just simply reflective of the fact that federal and state laws have changed, and the titles of the programs have changed, and this updated agreement is required for us to continue to participate in that process.
Do we need a motion to approve the changes, then?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes in the Joint Powers Agreement with Nemojet.
Support.
Questions or comments?
It was just, yeah, it was just brought to my attention at the last Joint Powers Meeting of Nemojet, and I passed it on, and it didn't seem like there was any, anything significant to worry about there, but good to go through the process.
And I will sign the updating.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chair, the last action, the last item that I have is just for information only, and it's an update on our implementation of the iCompass software, and the Board Manager functionality of the iCompass software. I know that Commissioner Bershaim noticed at some point last week that the Board, Boards and Commissions, the Board Member Boards and Commissions list on the portal for Civic Web was, did not match that was, which was on the county website. And we were aware that that was the case, because the Board Manager is being implemented. What I will say is that great progress has been made, and those lists are relatively the same at this point in time. We had an implementation meeting yesterday with iCompass, talking about Board Manager, and once we're satisfied that the information on the portal under Get to Know Your Commissioners, Meet Your Commissioners, is representative of the assignments that were approved in January, then we'll continue to move that information, the location for that information will be the portal, and we will take that information off the regular county website so that there isn't a duplication. Are there any questions about that process? If you notice a discrepancy, we would just ask that you let myself and April know so that we can address it. As you've noticed, there are some things that are linked, and there are some things that are grayed out. The things that are grayed out are typically the external meetings, and we can provide a link, but when you click a link to something that's external, it's going to take you away from the county domain and the county portal to that, like Arrowhead Regional Corrections will take you to their website. I will say that the trainer who was looking at our list of Boards and Commissions said, "Wow, you guys have a lot of Boards and Commissions." So, even to an outsider, your lists of commitments appear to be, appear to be long.
On iCompass, can it say if we're primary or alternate? Just because this is what some of the public uses to contact us as the representative on that committee?
I would appreciate a discussion on that, because we had another Commissioner suggest that they didn't want alternates listed, because it makes the list longer, so-
Because the list doesn't have our alternate responsibilities.
Yeah, they're listed, but they're not shown under your, so, for instance, if you went to one of the Boards or Commissions and you looked at the membership, you would see both Commissioners listed there, but the alternates are not listed on your individual Meet Your Commissioner portion-
Okay.
Because there's no way to-
Okay, my devil's advocate on that, I don't always remember who my alternate is on a committee, so I use your list to find out. But we can find that elsewhere, right?
If you go, if you go back to the meetings list, click on the meetings button. For instance, which meeting do we have there that has an alternate?
The Airport Commission.
So, click down to the Airport Commission.
This one I actually know.
So, the ones that are showing here now are the public boards that we're managing the agendas for. We have the ability to show the rest of the Commissions that are not, well, Airport Commission is a, is a public meeting, but there's just a lot of workflow and a lot of permutations here, so we have to make some decisions on how we're setting this up. Part of that's going to be through trial and error.
Yep.
And I will tell you that, to this point, we've had somebody suggest that alternates be included, and somebody suggests that alternates not be included.
I'm okay with alternates not being on this list, as long as I have a way at 10:00 at night when I'm at home, and I can't get April to find it myself.
The document that Brady's office has to identify who's authorized for reimbursements on which programs, that'll continue to be provided. So, that document continues to be available as a different resource.
Yes, I'm just looking for it online.
So, the one that's going to be on the web portal will be just the primary assignments.
Right now, that's what it is.
Right now, that's what it's showing.
Okay, well-
Is there somewhere where us Commissioners are on this iCompass, that the full list can be like at the top after it's approved? The link that Brady has to the committees, so then alternates-
What Brady has is a hard copy of a Word document that's maintained separately and at great administrative time and cost. What we're hoping to do is set the parameters in this so that we can run a report and print the same thing.
Yep.
So, we're partway through that. We printed the first list yesterday, and basically what it told us is that you guys have a lot of commitments. We're not responsible for all of those commitments, so we can't, you know, that it's, it's, we're getting there.
Okay, work in progress. Moving on to budget discussions.
Madam Chair, so this is your first look at the 2020 budget requests. The overview is that the requests are in at $10,184,970, which is a 4.03 increase compared to 2019. And the increase does take into account the proposed cut to the Ty Blatnick payment, but it also includes that increased six, what I call 6902 PIL that we received last year, that just sat in our fund balance. Said, "Well, this is the year to take that out of fund balance and put that into the budget." So, when you look at the general fund, that is on the last page, it's in that miscellaneous, if you're looking at the general fund, it's in there as a part of the payment. And the other thing that makes, that ameliorates that $751,000 proposed cut is that our 2012 equipment bonds have now expired, we're not levying for those in 2020. We had hoped to hold a line item there to save money for future debt service on projects, or just for capital needs, cash, but this may not be the year to do that, so, until we find out if that Ty Blatnick cut will continue or not, or if that will soften in some manner. So, what it shows here, if you look at the initial 2020 county budget and levy, you see the general fund first. Does anybody see that? It's on the second page. And we'll see the general fund at a 12.5% increase, the Highway Department at a 1.14% increase, Human Services at a .74% increase, the Airport at a 1.48% increase, the Building Fund at 67.64% increase, the decrease in bond cost, the net result, a 4.03% proposed The next page just gives you a summary of the capital expenditure requests. The first list of items are in the general fund, you have the usual list of IT replacements, basically, of equipment, which is down about $10,000. They're finding it's the same equipment, but they're finding it at lower costs. The next one is the attorney, they have an outdated case management system. Software, large software purchases are considered capital in our policy, so there's a capital item for that software. A lawnmower in the Maintenance Department, some equipment replacement in search and rescue, those are all levy items. Then, 208, that's E911 Dispatch Desk, that all comes from E911 funds, therefore, it's not a levy item, but it's listed here as a capital expense. Armor radio, this is the second year the sheriff has asked to put away $60,000 a year for three years to replace that armor. These are the mobile radios for all of the agencies that we're responsible for. The Recycling Department is asking for $20,000. This is for any equipment replay. They've had unexpected equipment replaces in the last two or three years, so this is anticipating another one, because they have aging equipment. Community Center has a small kitchen, warming house, equipment request of $2,000. The YMCA, we've put the long-term capital planning in there, again, $25,000, as recommended by CRBPS, and then $15,000 for unanticipated capital replacements, which seem to occur as they did this, this year and last year. And then $16,000 for copier, that is not from the levy, because we have a copier fund, it'll come from that fund balance. Below that is the Building Fund. This starts with Courthouse, the steps out front, the old steps and ramp, some painting and carpet. The Courthouse LEC, the security camera system is, go ahead.
Didn't we just replace that a few years ago?
The camera system?
We did at the LEC. It's within my seven years of being here, because it was a crisis situation.
I don't remember the exact year.
Law enforcement again? No, just here, just here.
Just here.
Because this says-
Okay, that was my understanding, so, just here.
Just here, thank you.
So, just the Courthouse. LEC fire panel replacement. Recycle Center needs the waste oil system replaced. Community Center installing a backup generator, which is primarily because it is an emergency operations backup center. At the Historical Museum, they're asking for additional work for a break wall, basically to, they've worked on the building for the flooding that has hit them, and then they're looking for additional work to, when the waves come over the shoreline, and then outside painting. And then the Community Park, this has been funding, this is pretty stable, these have been Diane's requests for planning ahead for the skateboard park, the horse park, the tennis courts, the Little League, and some skating. The Highway Department does not have plans for purchasing equipment, they want to put $105,000 additional into the equipment reserves, and to finish paying off the greater, which has been financed for three years.
Commissioner Duker?
So, we're putting $30,000 for the recycle center, because we're putting a $20,000 placeholder and a waste oil system.
That's the request.
Okay.
Some of that request, if you'll, you'll get your, you can pick up your books today, they're complete now, and you'll see the write-ups from the various departments. And part of Tim's request is that we've been, we've made use of the $507,000 that was originally set aside in the Building Fund in case we had to put in a new-
Transfer station.
Transfer, either a transfer station or an actual landfill, which hasn't come to pass yet, but that, that money's being used, and it's down to some $480,000, so he's got that on his mind also, because that's been his backup plan for when equipment fails up there. He's had that, but it may not be there forever. The next item that it put in your packet was the, we just got our 2018, this is draft results, not final, for a couple of days, but our general fund, fund balance, we had a very good increase, so we're at 9.77 on reserve, which is 89% of our current expenditures. Again, and we have to say this for the last several years, is that number also includes evaluation calculation that's now required on our investments, and so that can change. Some of that is not all cash sitting in the bank, but as you can see, looking back, it's fairly stable. But if you look at, so this is just the general fund, but if you, if you bring in all of our other funds, the Highway Department ended up in the positive last year, as did Human Services, but if you take all of our other major funds, our percent of current expenditures is 72%. So, until all of those are carrying their own, let's say, capacity for carrying approximately six months of expenses, I don't really see the 89% as available funds, because we're covering all of the funds, and right now, they're not quite out of capacity. To me, we're at 75% overall.
Which is our policy.
Which has been our goal. We don't have it in a policy, but it's been our general goal, so. So, the next item is a general fund budget review, and I don't think you want to sit through a line item on that. If you have reviewed it, I would take questions, otherwise, you may wish to go to the sheriff for his specific review.
Assistant Mills?
I have reviewed it, and I did have a question, but I just don't remember what that was.
You are not, you are not alone. I'm going through, going, where did I write that question down?
I may be skipping ahead, do you want to-
Madam Chair and Commissioners, given time constraints, I'll mention that Attorney Hickon is not going to be able to present her capital request this week, we'll move that forward to the next budget. This is not the only time that we get to discuss, this is just the first time that you get to see the summary of the requests that were put together. I would rec, and so, I would recommend that since we have Sheriff Eliasson here, and he's not available, that we move forward to his, his review of the things in his request. The only item for action that I would ask that we can, that we consider today is the Arts and Culture discretionary grants, because I do need direction if we're going to submit, if we're going to open up the application process for those. Everything else can be carried forward to a future meeting or a future work session, or discussions in between meetings with both Brady and myself.
Great. Should we skip and C and move in, skip and B and C and move into D?
G.
Or G?
D.
Or do you want to skip all the way to G and do that first?
I believe this is, I don't believe Sheriff Eliasson was going to be available on the 27th, and we have the Highway Department scheduled for that day, so since he's here, I think we should, and there are some important things on here, but it's not an exhaustive conversation, so I think we should invite him to talk about the special items in his list.
By one minute. Should I sign in? Anyhow, Madam Chair and Board, Jeff and Brady, this, I think, will go fairly quickly. I'll start with the budget changes for 2020, and it's this, which you should have, I hope. In account 26102, which is... I don't know why that's 6102. You don't have this one? You want me... Well, Jeff's making copies. I will talk about the armor radio, annualized the $60,000 that I asked for last year, which the board granted, and thank you for that. I'm asking for another $60,000 this year, and I will be, again, next year to build up a surplus to replace armor radios, which according to our armor radio expert Rowan Watkins are coming to the end of their lives. And to replace every radio for the sheriff's office and every radio for search and rescue, which the sheriff's office is responsible for. Last year, when I got a code for that, it was approximately, thanks, approximately $210,000. So when we have to begin doing this, and let me backtrack a little bit. For the sheriff's office and specifically for our squad cars, we have been doing this already. So as we get new squad cars, we replace the armor radio in the squad cars. We haven't replaced any handheld radios, just because they are still working, and we're hoping to, you know, keep them working for quite some time. But there may be a time when they do die, and we will be on the hook to replace them, obviously, for public safety reasons and for search and rescue reasons. So in my opinion, that's a pretty big factor, especially for all the people we have in Cook County, not just the residents, but the people we have during peak seasons, which, as each of you know, the peak season, you know, lasts for about 10 months in Cook County now. So the radios are our lifeline, and that's why I ask for that. Now, getting back to the budget changes here. Account 26102 is overtime. That has been increased, actually by Brady increased it based on calculations for negotiated salaries and benefits moving forward to... Into 220. Account 26245 is dues and subscriptions. We use that for memberships in certain organizations, you know, Minnesota Sheriff's Association, National Sheriff's Association, AMC, anything like that. So I asked to increase that because we have been falling behind on those, and we seem to be over budget. 26282 is the K-9. Now, we... Two years ago, when we developed the K-9 team, I'd asked for $20,000 to buy the dog, put our K-9 handler through training, any other equipment, vet bills, food, anything like that. So since that time, obviously, we don't have that quite of an expense anymore. So I've asked, you know, decreased that to $10,000, and, you know, moving forward, I've talked to our K-9 handler and to Melissa, and, you know, that's probably going to go down again, but I just want to make sure that we have enough in there for this year, and especially with the donations that, you know, the community has been so gracious in giving the K-9 program specifically, you know, that account will continue to decline. 26331 is meals and lodging. Now, this has to do with deputy trainings, dispatcher... Mostly, I shouldn't say dispatcher, mostly deputy trainings, hotels, and their per diems when they go out of town for training. So I've asked that to increase, and basically that has to increase due to our requirements with the post board and with other certifications that deputies need to have to keep their positions and state license in the state of Minnesota. 26425, that's uniforms, and I bumped that up a little bit just for our new hires. We seem to be going... We get two every year, you know, and it's quite costly, especially now that we... When somebody's hired here, we are responsible for providing all of their, you know, duty leather, their weapons, their body armor, uniforms, and as we know, costs keep going up. Now, the green is for the 911 account, and that account is, as you all are aware, that account cannot be used for everything. It can only be used for specific items regulated by state statute. So monies are deposited into this account based on taxes for your phones. You'll see on your phone bill, 911 tax. So that money is dispersed throughout the state of Minnesota and goes into different P S apps, which are public safety answering points, which we have in Cook County. So we get so much money every year to put into this account, and it can only be used for specific things. One of those specific things is furniture and anything related to dispatch centers. So our furniture and the way our dispatch center has been laid out was 20 years ago, and since that time, with the more and more technology we have, and we have more computer screens, we have more servers, we have... Everything is technology-dependent in our dispatch center. We've done what we can, but in my opinion, and in the jail administrator's opinion, and dispatchers' and lead dispatcher's opinion, we need to do something in there for better continuity and better functioning for dispatchers and for the public. So we're asking for $60,000 to remodel the dispatch center, which would be furniture. I've spoken with MIS. They don't think it'll be a big deal running network cables in there because we can run it through the ceiling and drop down and have, basically have towers. The largest expense will be for the furniture and for an electrical contractor to come in there and run the power. So that's $60,000 will come out of the 911 account, which does not have any effect on the general fund. And the last one is 2506280, and that has to do with the jail specifically. That is professional and contract services. Now, that was used for doctor bills, anything that had to do with inmates, not meals or housing or transportation, but everything else that has to do with the inmates. Our jail administrator, current jail administrator, Ben Hallberg, has done a fantastic job of finding shortcuts which were there, but we never knew about, specifically medical care and medical billing. We had been paying all of the medical bills for inmates. Well, we don't have to do... We don't have to pay the whole bill. We can charge their insurance for them, or we don't have to pay the going rate. We can... We only have to pay what medical assistants would have to pay. So moving forward, we have kept that under budget significantly, so I started by just taking $5,000 off that for now, just to be safe, and as we move forward, you know, we can probably expect to take more off of that in the future. So when you put all of them together, even the increases against the decreases, it comes out to zero balance.
Because you removed the green.
Excuse me?
Because you removed the green from that.
Right, exactly. The green, I mean, the green is there, obviously, but it doesn't... I guess should say a zero balance against the general fund. And what else do we have here? The dispatch furniture justification, did you guys... Did everybody get a copy of that? Okay. Do you have any questions about that at all? Other than that, that's pretty much it for the changes in the sheriff's office budget for 2020.
Thank you. That's great. Questions coming. The 10,000 for search and rescue, that's items that aren't covered under FireWise?
It is, and the 10,000 is used for different equipment replacement, purchasing new equipment. We've actually been very lucky in the last few years. We have used a lot of the Stone Garden grant and a lot of the Boat and Water grant to purchase items for search and rescue, so we're doing pretty good there. But the 10,000 is, you know, in the case of, you know, a generator breaks or we need some repairs on a vehicle or something like that, we like to keep that around.
Fix the doors so you're not locked in the backseat of a search and rescue truck?
I mean, as everybody knows, I mean, $10,000 when you're talking about items like that, that doesn't last long far.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation. Anything else, Brady? We just... We come and get our binders after the meeting?
Yeah, they're ready.
They're ready? Okay.
Madam Chair, I would ask if we skip ahead to item G and have that conversation, and then if before the end of the meeting, if you would provide Brady and myself with some direction as to what additional conversations you'd like to have, when you'd like to have them, that would be helpful. But if we could, go to item G now. As people may or may not recall, discretionary grants used to be a part of the general board process, and it used to be tied to, I think it was, at one point, it was 4% of the previous year's levy was what was allocated to that, and then it was changed to 3%, and then it was cut by just a general dollar amount a couple of years in a row. And last year, the vast majority of the grants were moved over to public health because they were things that addressed the issues on the public health five-year planning thing as far as senior meals and access to services and things that were... That are more viewed in a public health way. Those items are represented in the public health budget, and that process is in its second year of being reviewed by a subcommittee, the Public Health and Human Service Advisory Committee. That number is included in the grant in the levy impact summary that Brady provided earlier. So what's left are primarily the grants that have been historically offered by the county under the authority... This being Minnesota, you can't grant money without a specific authority and without a perceived public purpose. So there's a... A, there's a specific authority to make arts and culture grants, local government arts and culture grants within state statute, but B is, is there a perceived public purpose? That's up for the board to decide. And then C, once you determine that, you still have to authorize that we would make those grants available, distribute the applications, and tell us what the limit for this year is. And then we'd have to come back with a process to review the applications and make those grants later. But we're really late in the season to be getting this out, so I would ask that you have a conversation about that and provide direction as to whether you want us to continue with this process or not.
I'm sorry, which process? Which? Specifically, continue with which process?
The arts and culture grants under...
Okay.
Budget?
G. Yep. Speaking for myself, I wouldn't want to see anything decrease there. I was alarmed to kind of hear a little bit of history, talking with Jeff earlier about where things had just been getting cut and cut and cut, and I understand there's been significant levy changes recently, and so I could see that need, but just the dollar amounts that we're talking about and the impacts it has on those organizations, I don't think justifies our cutting that. But I see angry faces, or not angry faces, I see confused... I see disagreeing faces, maybe.
You have a comment?
Yeah, I am... I do have a... I have a problem with supporting these. The Art Colony, these are all nonprofits, I believe, and, you know, Art Colony was just able to buy a building down on Highway 61. You know, it's the playhouse works out of the school. I don't even know if the North Shore Music Association is telling the truth, but I do have a problem with supporting them.
And Dave, just for some history on some of these discussions, specifically this group, I'm not going to cover the whole discretionary. They have the ability to raise fees to cover some of these. I'm not saying this is my opinion, I'm just saying this is the discussion amongst previous board people, people who've sat in your seat. They have the ability to raise, like North Shore Music Association raised the cost of events that they have to cover it. Some of the discussion was that they have the ability to find funding in other places. If we, as a board, gave them better notice ahead of time, we've discussed this, you know, not this late in the year, they're able to find other ways and other resources to get funding and to find this money when we tell them in advance, we're just not going to offer this type of funding anymore. So those are the discussions that have been had in the past and part of the decision-making in why we cut some of it because we knew that they... We wouldn't be cutting them off, and we wouldn't be forcing them out of the community because we knew they had other ways to find their funding. So those are the conversations. I know when you just hear it from cut, 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 and there was a long discussion and thought process on it.
I can appreciate those points. I just know from the various committees and organizations that I've interacted with that they often need a local match to get those fundings. And so I think that's very important, and oftentimes it's a 50/50, you know, so... Or whatever, you know, a little bit can go a long ways. And I do recognize they do have the ability to raise fees, and I have my... I have experienced those raised fees, and it does limit what population can, you know, participate in.
And we have those conversations.
Yeah, and so, I mean, for those very reasons is why I would not want to cut, is because it limits... When you do these cuts, it limits who can participate.
And maybe we change this fund, and we say that there's an arts and culture fund that has 15,000 a year. I hate to say another committee, but it's an application, and when an organization needs a match of 2,000, they can come submit an application instead of it being part of the budget. I mean, it will be part of the budget process, it will be budgeted, but it won't be an application at budget.
That sounds smart.
It sounds smart, but then when we start talking about it, we'll come up with all the reasons why it's not smart. Jeff has one.
I would specifically clarify, you're not authorizing money for Art Colony, North Shore Music Association.
No.
What I'm asking you is if you want to allocate money to be set aside to make arts and culture grants in 2020. And there is an application, and there is a process. So the question isn't, should we support Art Colony? The question isn't, should we support North Shore Music? The question is, should we allocate money?
For arts and culture. We've had about 140,000 altogether, 130?
Well, if we went by the previous list when I first got here, we'd... With a $10 million levy, we'd be setting aside 300,000 next year.
Wow.
And that number was cut down to... Last year was 145,000 total.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, well, yeah. Thank you for that context, too.
So that's total? Right.
And can you give me the cover page for the funding application? This is two years, you said? This particular?
I think we used it for the last two years.
Okay. So it's pretty recent, but just looking at the criteria, public value, proven performance, and financial stewardship. and financial stewardship. Those criteria, I think are, I can agree with those. That's, that's, it seems pretty legit. And so to meet those, those criteria, I think, if an organization meets that criteria, I feel like that will directly benefit our community and should have, should have our support.
Mr. Bush.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I've thought a lot about this, and you look at, you know, the context of this amount of money in our budget, and, and I, I sometimes think about bang for the buck for a common good, you know? And so, actually, I think we should do this, we should actually have more money, because it does kick back something. But here again, you know, it's a philosophical thing, you know, should we get into this? We have been doing it, and I think the timing of it is such that it's, it's pretty far into the year, and I don't think I'd want to change something.
Could we change the amount?
I think, you know, I...
It's up to us to say what the maximum is.
Yeah, I...
We're not picking a specific organization, we're just saying if we're going to continue.
I totally understand it. I'm just saying that, you know, $15,000, $15,000 is a very, very small amount of money for what good it can do if you believe in arts and culture. And so, and then what kind of economic development does it have for, you know, we're in a tourist economy, and I, I, I don't know, I think that maybe we should consider more or not do it at all, because it's such a small amount.
Well, the total budget is 145,000. So for the, for the whole package of, of everything, right?
Madam Chair, I would really split those up.
You want to split them up?
It's, we already have split that up. The decision was made a couple of years ago to split those up.
Oh, you're talking...
She's talking other discretionary.
Health, public health.
The health.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, can I, can I have context as far as number of applicants, the demand, huh?
In the past?
Yeah, yeah. Do you have, does anyone have that?
I believe last year, there were three applicants, and their requests were for more than what was authorized, so their requests were cut back from what they asked. I don't know that there were more. Truly, if you ask a nonprofit about making a grant application that requires all the detail you're looking at for $2,000, most of them will tell you it's...
Sure, not worth it.
It's a, it's a high bar to do that. But...
And so have we spoken with the applicants?
No, but they've been asking.
Okay.
As the, as the applications were circulated for the public health grants, people were asking, when is the information about the arts and culture grants going to be coming out? So it's a small community. Those people who are running those agencies are waiting to hear whether this is going to be offered this year or not.
Well, as far as taking it to the budget committee? Do we want to make a recommendation here and then we take it to the budget committee?
Well, we're the deciding...
I know, but make a recommendation or decide or, so that we know when we're looking at this with the budget.
What, Commissioner Bush, what, what amount would you think would make, I mean, would be appropriate?
I don't know.
Oh.
I guess I'm just thinking that, you know, and I think our administrator said it well, that more than likely because of all this paperwork and the process, that we're going to, the people that have been getting it are going to have a competitive advantage, and that's fine. But, you know, I think the issue is, should we be doing this at all? And if we're going to do it, then let's make it have a return that's significant. And I, you know, I'm really not for or against this. I guess I think the timing would lead me to say that we shouldn't change anything at all and then study it more. But my point being, we cut this and cut it and cut it and cut it, and it's down to such, you know, maybe it means a lot. I, I really don't know. It, I think it has merit to look at what is an appropriate amount. And we indiscriminately cut things sometimes because we say we can't afford it, and then I, I think, well, maybe we should take a look at the value and the return. I, I'm not really advocating for anything. I guess I'd just say, let's not change anything, maybe give more thought to it. But I think once we cut it, then we're done.
So your point is that we leave it the way it is for this year?
Yeah, I guess, I think that would be a good thing to do and then study it more. It might be a good topic for the budget committee to talk about, there are citizens on that. And I know there's been some discussions, they've been brought up, you know, pro and con. I think it has a lot to do with values and philosophy and, but I guess if we're going to do it, I think we should look at what it's worth better.
Take another year to do that.
Yeah, I guess.
Commissioner Duquette?
The comments I get from community members is that they support arts and cultures, and they would like to decide how their money is spent rather than the county choosing for them. Does that make sense?
Similar with the Y.
Well, not really, it's a whole different ball of wax. I mean, those who, who can, you know, write a check for $500 want to be able to do that. I mean, because we've had such high levies and it's been so difficult, and maybe this year's different since we're looking at a preliminary of only 4%, maybe it's not going to be as stressful as it has in the past. But I just know that past discussions have been, you know, we don't want to say no to any of these organizations, but those who can afford to give should. But we can't tell people to give either, and we know that doesn't always work. I'm just responding to...
Yeah, if I could respond to that, I guess my intent was, you know, we would not do this to discourage giving. I give to organizations because of the value, and I don't look at whether it's coming from the county or not. It's going to be in the merits of the things that I think are important from what I donate. And so I, I don't think it's going to have that much of an impact on what people are going to give unless they're really looking for an excuse.
But it has an impact on those who struggle to pay their property taxes and are looking at us to make cuts.
So 15,000, I'm sorry, I don't want to discuss this, but...
I know, it's small, small beans.
I only know how you could calculate that percent. It's the air of statistics and financing.
I'm just telling you what the comments from citizens have been to me about it.
Commissioner Deshaun?
Yeah, when you talk about $15,000 isn't very much money, Myron. You know, and we just had a meeting last week on our, on the county's facility that houses the YMCA, which is looking at $25,000 for repairs there. You don't think that's very much money? You know, money's money here, it's the taxpayers' money, we are responsible for it. You know, we spent a lot of money this year on that building, and every time that, you know, we went meeting to meeting to meeting, and it always came up more and more and more for that facility. And, you know, I got, we probably all got questions from the public about that, you know, when's it going to stop? When's it going to stop? You know, we already know from our meeting last week that the Y is going to take more money this year to repair it. It's falling apart. And, you know, it, when you say $15,000 isn't much money, that's kind of, it's kind of a slap in the face to the taxpayers of this community.
And I kind of along Commissioner Deshaun's lies, I mean, this one thing, and 15 isn't a lot, but we do this 10 times over a year, and it's a 1% of the levy.
Well, I guess, my question about reaching out to the applicants was to see how this would affect, taking this away, how would that affect them? Because I think that's important to know before we do it.
I like Myron's suggestion of leaving it this year and asking those questions. It's not my first choice, but I'm willing to accept it.
At this point.
I know how it'll affect them because we used to have them come speak to us individually, and I know one of the organizations, not a lot of money on there, but I know that every time they came in, they told us very specifically what the impact would be to them, and to them, it's huge because their budget isn't very big to begin with, so...
And that's, that's my concern, I guess.
Yeah, they don't have another resource besides us, and we don't want to lose them in the community.
So that's what I'm hearing, we'll leave it as it is.
Jeff, do you need a motion?
I do need a motion because what I'm asking is permission to, to announce that there's some amount of money available for arts and culture grants, and this is the process that we're going to follow. And I would, you know, is it going to be a 30-day application period if I get it out today?
So with your, with the motion, you need a dollar amount, or what?
I, I would, I would need to know that we're going to have an arts and culture grant round this year not to exceed X amount of dollars.
And right now, there's 15,200.
That was last year's number, yep, that's correct.
And the year before that, do you know?
I think it was 15,200 the year before that, and then the year before, it was more than that because it was combined.
Yep. I'll make a motion to authorize no more than 15,200 in arts and cultural grants for 2020.
Support.
Any further comments, questions?
And Brady, this is part of the calculations you already gave us this morning?
Nope.
Nope.
There's nothing in there.
Okay, so this would add to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Okay. We are at the moment of... Brady, do you have any more?
I have none.
Okay, Jeff?
No, Madam Chair, everything else can be deferred to a future meeting.
Okay.
I did have, I did, I thought you were asking for a little more direction on the budget or...
I can carry, the first, the first item, the first idea would be to carry all of these things to the 27th. The next idea would be to schedule if we need additional meetings. I will, I will say that I would believe from the initial levy summary that shows a very modest increase needed, A, you've balanced the budget, the work done the last three years has worked, okay? We can support the operating budget as it exists with modest increases. Now, that's still a subjective term, but I think it's a lot less heat than we've faced for the last four years. That being said, there might not be as much public scrutiny, but that doesn't mean that there doesn't need to be as much diligence about this. As Brady said, your, your books are available and ready for you to review. Next week, we'll be reviewing the Public Health and Human Services budget request. The week after, we'll be reviewing the Highway Department request. If you want to review the line item, general fund reviews, I need to know when you'd like to do that so we can schedule it. We will consider the, the lists that Brady put together for the capital requests and the new requests from 2019 to 2020. But at, at this point, I'm, I'm asking for your direction. So the, those are the things that we have scheduled. If you want more, we can do more. We might be able to, I mean, if we just, if we just plan to have some time for budget questions at the end of the meeting, and we just plan to go a little bit longer on the meetings we have between now and the end of September, I think we can accomplish that.
One, one general concern I had is the increase of only 4%. Like, yeah, we can use the money from last year, but what happens next year? Like, do we want to split half of the money from last year into next year? We just don't know what's going to be happening with the tieblat neck, so it...
I, I would, and I would ask Brady to confirm this, but operationally, this year, we're carrying forward last year's over additional payment in PILT from another fund, and we will have that for next year, but we have no guarantees beyond that. So operationally, if the PILT stays at the 1.35 proposed this year, the $751,000 reduction, we shouldn't see any change to our operational capacity in 2021 as compared to this. What I will say is, and Brady said this earlier, but I want to reinforce it, we were planning on holding out that $330,000 of retired debt towards future capital projects. Whether we earmark it, identify a specific project, or save it towards necessary repairs we know we have coming, we were going to earmark it this year. As Brady said, given the fact that that $750,000 federal payment shortfall, this might not be the year to do that. But we do know that we're going to have future capital needs, and we do know that we need to make plans for those. And one plan is to just carry the operational budget and bond for improvements as we need to, as we did in 2018, as has been historically the case. The other is to start building capacity to buy down the, or pay for some of those future capital projects. This may or may not be the year to do it. That 4.03 does not reflect very much towards that. It also doesn't cover a couple of other items that I'm going to, I'm going to bring forward in specific requests. Pat talked about overtime at the Law Enforcement Center and carrying that, and we have grant funds to carry, to cover a lot of overtime. There's a lot of scheduled overtime in law enforcement, and that's something that we should know. But we have a PTO accrual balance in Brian's department and the Maintenance Department of 1,600 hours a year. The staff accrue that. So our typical practice is, he sends an email and says, Lindy's off for a couple of days, please close the windows and let us know if anything needs to be cleaned. If that's an appropriate level of service, that's okay. But that happens because we don't have enough staff to cover the PTO accruals within that department. If the level of service needs to be that we expect all those things to get done every day, then we would have to staff at least 1,600 more hours to cover that. And I, and I just, these have come up. At the Highway Department with our maintenance crew and the, and the vehicles and the fleet that we have and the staff that we have, if everybody's there, all the vehicles are working. But with the staff we have in our Maintenance Department, we have more than a 2.0 FTE PTO accrual every year, which means those vehicles are not working on days. Or people aren't able to take their PTO, and we're paying out additional comp time, and we're paying out overtime when, when we might not otherwise have to. So PTO accrual is something that we've not addressed in this operational budget, and it's not addressed this year either. But this is when I wanted to make a notice that at least those two things are not reflected in that preliminary levy summary that Brady proposed.
And that's my concern, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's valid concern.
But I do trust that if, if you guys are thinking that this is not the year to do that, if, if next year will be fairly safe too from the, the PILT reduction, but I mean, we're going to know a lot more in a year about that, and if we need to try to make that stretch or whatever, but I mean, the PTO and the capital needs should be, I think, planned for, but...
Barring some major disruption in federal payments or state payments or some other other people's payments? I don't see a major impact on the 2021 operational budget if it carries the way it's cur... it carries the way it's currently staffed. But that's not saying that, that in 2022 we aren't going to see something different. I think, I think the math actually carries off the $751,000 loss, but half of it's bought down by the fact that we retired that debt.
Mm-hmm, right.
And we've taken that money and put it into the operational budget instead of holding it out in the cap, future capital budget.
Yep.
So that's the, that's the biggest portion. The other portion is that the Highway Department budget doesn't show any new vehicle needs. We've set our capital equipment replacement program on hold. We did so at an appropriate time, right after we purchased the three graders to replace the ones that had, had exceeded their capacity. And those are the biggest cost items we have on that list. So those items should last eight to 12 years, depending on the hours that we're putting on them. But we are going to have to reboot the capital equipment replacement program at the Highway Department and the year we do that is going to show an uptick as well. So there's, we've, we've got the way, we've gotten to where we are by raising the levy to balance the, the operational expenses that were approved. And we've gotten the way we are by deferring a lot of current needs.
Yeah. So the other commissioner is comfortable with knowing those future costs and keeping things at four now or, I mean, that was, that's why I'm concerned is, if we see things that are going to need to be addressed now and four isn't nothing, but we've seen a lot worse, do we, do we try to take a bite out of the...
Added time to our meetings to have these discussions about the budget. I'm, you know, I'm used to being here eight to 10 hours, so I don't have a problem with spending more time to drill into that and have those conversations, I think they're important.
Procedurally, just a reminder, by the end of September, the Board has to set a preliminary levy and a date for the Truth and Taxation Meeting. And then that levy barring very extreme unforeseen circumstances, that can't go up between September and December, it can only be adjusted down. So just a reminder of the statutory requirements for setting that.
Right.
Just to comment, I really appreciate, as Commissioner, on the Budget Committee too, I appreciate the work that has been done and I interpret where we're at as a recommendation that they're seeing from their perspective and their experience and, you know, the uncertainty of this whole Thai Blatnik thing is, is, you know, so that's, that's one approach to do in regards to this uncertainty and, but their, your concern is, you know, part of the discussion is, I think, very important when we do the preliminary levy to have that revisited because, you know, will we know more then or will we know less? More than likely, we won't know. But I think your point is well-taken as far as I'm concerned, that we have to look at that too. So I think I interpret their recommendations as something we should consider, but we have till the end of September to hash this out.
Okay. Jeff, anything else?
Nope.
So we have employee concerns, Commissioner reports, any reports? We do have a board development coming up August 22nd and 23rd, that'll be posted later, we'll all be attending. And then we have a conference in September. Anything else other than anniversaries? Nothing? Then we move on to August anniversaries.
All right, we have Carolina Mitchell in the Attorney's Office, two years. Grace Bouchard, 12 years in our Public Health and Human Services. Keyshawn, only one year in MIS, he's done a lot in that year. Lisa Kerr, four years in Land Services and that is combined with her time in the Assessor's Office. Michael Kinderman, four years in the Highway Department. And Wesley Higgins, six years at the Highway Department. Thank you all so much.
Yes, thank you. And to your point, Commissioner Mills, the Shorter Area Historical Society sent a very nice thank you letter for the money that they received. So it's always appreciated that we're appreciated. Okay, anything else, otherwise we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I do have a question about that, actually. Where does that money come from?
What money?
The Historical Society money. Is that not part of the Arts and Culture, is that...
No, no, Historical Societies are authorized by a different statute and that, that request is dealt with at the same time that the Cook County Historical Society request is brought forward. So that'll be discussed as part of the elements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Pass that to Jeff. And I'll sign all this, yes.